Good afternoon. Okay, sorry about that. Good afternoon. This open meeting of the Board of Appeals is being conducted hybrid pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Town and Nantucket Zoning Board of Appeals is convening in person and by video conference using the Zoom app as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note again that some attendees are participating by video conference. If you are on video conference, be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. All supporting materials that have been provided members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. So I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Town and Nantucket Zoning Board of Appeals this Wednesday, December 18, 2024, at 1:05. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda as drafted? So moved. Okay, Lisa Botticelli makes that motion.
I have a comment about the agenda, Madam Chair.
Well, hold on one second. Well, is this about your email earlier today?
Yeah.
I don't, I'm not changing the agenda. We can, let's address it outside of this. We're not, I'm not changing the agenda today.
But I need, I want to make a point before we vote on this. We can discuss it.
I don't want to discuss it. We have this, we have this room until 4 o'clock.
If we can't discuss a motion, then why, what's the purpose of the board? Why don't?
I don't, I don't want to discuss changing the way that we do.
I do.
I understand that, but I want to stay on topic. If you have suggestions for the agenda.
Just like any other motion, we're allowed to comment on it. So if not, what's the purpose of this board? And all I want to say is.
Jim.
Is she not, should, this is something the chair knows.
I don't know what you're talking about, but.
There's no specific items on the agenda, which is, which is not in customary form for any meeting, including previous 40Bs. It's very hard for this, for board members to look at things in order to be prepared for a meeting.
Well, Jim.
There are thousands of pages.
Jim, you.
So I actually prepare myself. It's like preparing for the bar. I mean, we have no idea what's going to come up.
No, that's not true.
And what I'm suggesting is that that's how meetings get a little chaotic here.
So.
And I'm requesting that in, not this meeting, but upcoming meetings, that you include specific items, just like Ed Tool did when we were originally looking at this 40B. Otherwise, we're talking about garbage disposals and easements, which sewer easements, which could easily have been cleared up had we known that we were to discuss these things.
So did you look at the materials that were submitted? Because that's what we're discussing today. We asked, we asked applicant to.
Good to know now.
Well, what else would it, what else would it be? So.
There are outstanding items from last meeting? That's not, you know, what did, what did we ask for last meeting that, that's not on the agenda this meeting?
We're going to go through that today. Don Bracken submitted his, anyway, this is off topic. We need to approve.
It's not off topic.
We need to approve the agenda before we move forward. So Lisa has made a motion to approve the agenda. I need a second.
Is this what we're approving for your?
Uh, no, those are the submitted documents. This is the agenda. It's just the notice.
Okay, do we get a copy of that?
It's, it's on the website.
Let me know that, and George, you could talk to this, I guess, if George is here today.
On the website.
The, Madam Chair, may I ask our legal counsel?
No, not right now, Jim, hold on.
I think there are open meeting law requirements.
Jim, Alisa has, is looking for it, so I'm going to show her where it is.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. So if you, you have the, yes, okay, thank you. All we're proving is just the way that this is drafted.
Got it.
And then you can move on and then go back. Yeah. Okay. So again, I have requested for a motion to approve the agenda as drafted. I have, Elisa's made the motion, and I'm asking for a second. Okay, so Alisa seconds that motion.
Can we, can we request, can I request that counsel provide an update of what's required under the open meeting laws in terms of specific items, which is, which is in the open meeting law?
Um, George, is that within your, could you, are you able to make a ready response on the fly for that?
Good evening. I'm Gary.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, yeah, there, there you go.
Lost track of time. I got up early this morning to be here. Good to be with you. I'm George Pucci from KP Law, Nantucket Town Council. I can talk briefly to that issue. Your agenda certainly doesn't violate the open meeting law. You know, you have a continued public hearing that you had continued at the last hearing session, and then it was duly noticed. To Jim's point, I don't know if this is more what he's getting at. It is very helpful, especially in the 40B context, to know what topics that you're going to address that day. So, you know, you can kind of devote sessions to various topics, and then people can prepare on those issues and be prepared to speak to that. Both the applicant, your peer reviewer, your members, members of the public, interested parties, you know, they can speak to those topics. So I think it would benefit your process, not, and not necessarily that they're spelled out on the agenda itself, but that you make it clear, you know, toward the end of the session, what topics specifically you're going to address at the next session. And then the submissions can come in that way, and then the members can prepare that way. It is a good way of, of trying to do it, you know, sort of topic by topic. And then that way, if an interested party is speaking to that topic, they can speak to it. If they have other issues to raise, they could raise that at another time when, when that topic is being addressed. So it does provide some order to your, to your hearings, and it, it kind of, it is difficult if people get up and they're talking about different aspects of the project that, you know, isn't sort of cohesive to kind of agenda items, item by item. So hopefully that's, that's helpful. I know that, you know, might benefit the process if at the beginning of this session, you say what topics you intend to address today, and then, you know, toward the end, you can talk about what you anticipate addressing at the next hearing session. So I do think it would benefit your process if, you know, you have some type of process, however you want to do it, of designating the specific topics you intend to address at that next session.
Okay, thank you.
And my point in all this, Madam Chair, is not, not to have this gotcha moment, it's so that we can prepare. There's so much information, and we're just getting general things. And I just want to, and I'll give it to Billy, but the AG has said, "A list of topics that the chair reasonably anticipates 48 hours in advance. The list of topics must be sufficiently specific to reasonably inform the public of the issues to be discussed in the meeting." This is from the AG. I don't think this is sufficient. I'm not challenging today's agenda, but I want to make sure that we, you know, comply with it in all upcoming meetings like we do on regular meetings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as drafted. I'll do a roll call vote. Billy, can you confirm, who do I have on Zoom?
You have John Brusher on Zoom.
Okay. Okay, so.
So you will have to do roll call.
Yep, so when I call your name, say aye to approve the agenda as drafted. Lisa?
Aye.
Alisa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jim?
Nay.
And myself, aye. Okay, and that also serves as attendance. So we don't have any minutes to approve, so under old business, we have 2524 Surfside Crossing LLC.
Madam Chair, I have a comment about a minute.
We don't have any, we don't have any minutes on the agenda to.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to reopen or re-review the minutes that we approved last week for the, our 1022 meeting. The, the minutes were changed substantially, and I was, I was asleep at the wheel, and we approved them. And the chair tried to make this change back in November, I mean, back in October, and she basically slipped it into our minutes, made a substantive change to our minutes, and they were approved. And it's an incorrect statement, or it needs to be clarified by the board. It mischaracterizes what the board intended, and it went from, the board agrees with Mr. Mondani's summary of his issues with special counsel, to they don't agree with it. And I, that's not, how can that change without any discussion? I mean, you, you.
Because it was a typo in the minutes, and we discussed it at the minutes.
It goes more.
And John Brusher, myself, Billy, we all had the same recollection that that was not.
Where did you discuss this?
In a, in, is this a private meeting? In the meeting. No, we talked about it when we were sitting right here at the table.
This, again.
And then we, and then we decided to put them aside, go back.
I think it's very underhanded and for you to make these changes and not discuss, you knew this was an important issue.
Yeah.
What was included, but you made no comment, Billy made no comment, you slipped it in.
I didn't slip it in. I asked if anyone had any comments, if everyone had a chance to review it.
Because typically, the custom of this board is that we just, unless there's some grammatical errors, or we discuss it and, and we approve it. It's usually not a matter. In this case, you knew it was an issue, and you, you surreptitiously put it in for approval. I don't think any board member, no one's expected to, to redline two versions of the, of the minutes. And how could that be?
Okay, again, we have only until 4 o'clock, so if we, can we table this minutes issue till another time?
Well, just one final comment on that, sorry. And, and I'm sorry I'm bringing all these procedural things up, but they are important. So it changes from the board agreed to my letter to the select board laying out the reasons for why we need independent counsel, to your letter, which you didn't even provide to the board.
To what board?
You did not even, to this board.
Because it was premature, Jim, it never, you never should have sent anything directly to the select board. That was not your call.
So you.
And this board never voted on that.
We certainly did.
And you spoke for the zoning board to the select board as if we had, we had come to some decision, which we didn't. That's why it came back to us, we had a special meeting to discuss it.
And we did, and, and we agreed that my letter.
No, we did not. No, we did not.
Then why was it in the?
It was a typo, it was a typo in the minutes, Jim.
Well.
The second, the second, when you and I were at the select board, the second that sentence was said, I was like, what is that? I looked, I'm like, this is a typo. I missed the typo, Billy missed the typo, it was a typo. That is not what we voted on.
This is beyond, so I make the motion to reconsider those minutes so that they can be discussed. They don't need to be discussed now at the next meeting.
So I don't think we've ever done, can we do that? Can we reopen? I've never, I don't know procedurally. I'd rather.
Sure. Three, four, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Yeah, especially when it's been done to trick the board.
Nothing was done to trick the board. Jim, nothing was done to trick the board.
Well, that's my opinion, sticking to.
Okay, well, I think you have a misrecollection of the, what was voted.
I make the motion.
And what your, your.
I'll second the motion, only because I have no recollection, and it sounds important enough to just review together.
Yeah. I mean, the fact, Jim, that you made such a big deal about it and then didn't even read them, and now are wasting our time again, coming in being like, well, this, we can, we can talk about it again, and the same thing will be said. That was not what we agreed to, but.
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is not how.
Alisa's made a motion.
I'm not, I'm not about to check.
I want to move on to the next, to the next thing.
That you're making changes without our knowledge. I'm not, this, I'm not reviewing every single thing in this context.
When there are, when there are minutes, it is oftentimes that someone will say, oh, this is how, this is how this was written, but this is not what, this is, and make a change. It's, it's.
Yes.
You are expected to read the minutes. If you do not read them, and you vote on them and agree with them.
Which I didn't vote, I didn't vote.
Well, you obviously didn't read them. Okay, so there's a motion, you made the motion, Alisa seconded.
And I make the motion again because this isn't just a gotcha moment. This is our record of the meeting, so.
I think it's worth a review.
There's no gotcha moment, Jim. We can, we can go back and.
I said it's not a gotcha moment.
We can go back and talk about it.
This was the phone call, right, that I had to leave early on, so I wish I had any comments about this.
Yeah, yes, yeah, you left.
But I do think, let's just move on, let's re-review them.
Yeah.
We have plenty of.
Well, can we vote on?
So Jim has made the motion, Alisa has seconded. So we'll do a roll call vote again. Jim?
Aye.
Alisa?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
John?
And this is just to reconsider the minutes?
Yes.
Yeah, aye, that's fine, sure. Let's, let's move on, please.
Yeah, agreed. All right, so myself, I'll say aye too, so we can go back and go through those again for the third time. Okay. So now moving on to old business, 2524 Surfside Crossing LLC. So continuing from our last meeting, we had gone through Mr. Chessia's report, and we had had several open questions and requests from the applicant. If you look at the 1218 materials, we have the floor plans submitted, and, and for the two types of the buildings, plus the clubhouse, and those were, I believe, sent to Mr. Chessia, and he has those as well. And then the MIPA certificate, and then we have, pardon me, Don Bracken's and Attorney Haverty's responses to Chessia's review. So I guess I, I was going to start with the applicant, but I'd actually like to start with Mr. Chessia.
And then I'll.
So just so, so, and so everyone knows, like, given the, the confusion about the agenda, my, my plan was, looking at the documents that had been submitted, that we would go through the responses from the applicant, so through John Bracken and Attorney Haverty, and I guess the developer, if they're here and present, and then go to questions by the board, the public, and if Chessia had any follow-up on that. Then move to the Nantucket Land and Water Council has submitted information from both their attorney and their water consultant. And then again, we can comment on those, the board asked questions, the applicant may want to respond, and then if the public has comments on those. And then I was going to see if, just in general, Mr. Durencis had comments or responses, and he also submitted a letter, so then he can make his presentation. So again, I was going to start with that, with Mr. Bracken, but I think I will just start by asking Mr. Chessia if you had any new information for us based on the floor plans you received and/or, and/or if, if you had a chance to review Bracken, Mr. Bracken's responses.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Sure.
I thought we were also going to review the HGC comments, because I listened to the hearing and have a bunch of comments on the architecture of the buildings. Because they submitted a letter last week that we never got to.
The HGC did.
Yes, and I suggested that I.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I know you've done a lot of work on that.
Yeah, and I think it's, there were a lot of points that were brought up that are important in the, in the, in the scope of the project that I think should be discussed.
So I was thinking that we would get to, hope, I'm, my hope is that we get through this part of it, and then we can start talking about the actual, your, like, what you've been working on.
Right, but I do think that there might be some HGC concerns that address.
Some of.
The global project.
Yeah, so I was going to try to talk about the global project more towards the end. And then, and then I thought we could end there, and then start next time really talking about. Okay. The nuts and bolts of the project. But unless you think that there's something that you've turned up that will, that would impact or change, not change the answers, but impact the, the answers on either.
Well, I mean, I think.
Like with the roof runoff and things in the setback or anything like that.
Well, I mean, maybe not, not, potentially, I mean, I can't say specifically.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, so if you want to do it that way, that's fine, it's just.
Let's see if we can get through this and then do that, and then, because I really want, I, my, I really would like the next meeting for us to really get into the meat and the potatoes about the actual project versus just the, this high level talking about.
Yeah, I think sometimes, though, if you could speak to sort of the general scope of the project and information, and concerns with some of the other boards.
Yeah.
Maybe it'll change the discussion, but I'm happy to do it in whatever format, because maybe I'll bring up HGC issues while we're going through some of these lists.
I hope everyone had a chance to look at the planning board's letter and the select board's letter before this meeting.
Is this the one we authorize you to do, Lisa?
Yeah, the HGC.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so, so Mr. Chessia, did you have any feedback for us on, on the new materials you got or the new information?
So, I mean, I did, I read the letter, I looked through it, I made some notes. Obviously, I didn't have time to really do a subsequent response. I mean, the two things I guess I'd want to say, I did also submit a update to my plan comparison that was requested at the last meeting. I added a column for the April 2019 plan that sort of shows some of the information. That plan wasn't as comprehensive as the other ones in terms of some of the items in the table, but that's available for the board. The biggest issue I had with Mr. Bracken's response was, I did not get a copy with it. It says, "See attached plan, well-exhibit plan dated 11/25/24," but that isn't in any of the information that I received, and I don't believe that the board has it either, that, from what I understand, which, that was one of the issues, was, does it comply with all those setbacks? There are, you know, I, there are other things, there's a lot of things that the board, you know, will need to look at. I mean, floor plans were provided for the buildings, so that's good. I mean, I'm a civil engineer, not an architect or anything, so looking at the floor plans is really something, I think that it was more of a checklist item for my end, that the board should have that material to look at as part of this project, and they had not yet been provided. So now the board has the floor plans, they've been submitted. But some of the information in the response letter references a plan that I don't have, and I don't know if you have either, that shows some of the offsite features, shows the irrigation while they're proposing. And so I can't really comment on that, and that was one of the bigger things that seemed to potentially require some modifications. I'm not sure if you, I mean, I can go through my little notes on this, but it, I don't know if that's the most efficient use of the time on this, we have a short, short window on this, but whatever you want.
Okay, I think maybe we'll have Mr. Chessia, I mean, sorry, Mr. Bracken, go through his comments so we can ask questions, and then I guess if you could pipe up if anything comes up that you, that you want to say, and we'll keep an eye out for your hand up.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Oh, Mr. Haverty, you want to go first?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just wanted to, to point out, I was the one that was responsible for the submission of all the information that the board had requested. Mr. Bracken sent me his review letter. I did not realize that there was an exhibit that was supposed to be submitted with it, so it's my fault that that wasn't given to you. I will get that to the board by tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
What, what is that, that we're missing?
It's the, the exhibit, it's the, I think it's dated 11/25/24, the well plan that's going to, that shows the, the irrigation well that's referenced in the response. So, Mr. Bracken, do you want to go over your responses, and then the board can ask questions?
Yeah, I think Mr. Chessia sort of summarized it. I think there are a lot of the issues, as, as he said, he'll need time to review that plan that was just referenced. I think a lot of the stuff is housekeeping, that we don't necessarily have to go through each item, I don't think, until he gets that plan. There was questions raised about the EV stations, so there will be EV charging stations, and all those will be shown on final architectural plans. I know we touched base at the last meeting on the calculations, and we formally replied that drainage system is designed for 100 years to a common course of 25-year storm. Mr. Chessia asked us to look at a different precipitation mapping system, and we think we're covered with that, with the oversized drainage facilities as they design. Again, we had some questions on the, on the tables and the areas on the plan comparison. You know, our main question was the comparison between two of the plans, and not the initial plan and final plan, but we reviewed those numbers, and, you know, we agree with the numbers that he has in that table. It references to Cape Cod burn, a concrete curb. We couldn't find anywhere in our plans where we reference Cape Cod burn, but for the record, everything is concrete curb. Some concerns about the parking areas, not having turnout areas in the back, obviously site constraints, the rougher areas, but some of the last spaces don't have these turnout areas, but as we all know, that's typical in Nantucket. We replied to that. And then the comments on the landscaping plan, I believe at the, in the 2023 meetings that we had, I believe the board was going to be satisfied with having a landscape architect review and certify the plans, because that wasn't done initially, as far as having any additional consultants review the landscaping.
Madam Chair?
Yep. Go ahead.
Just had some questions about site. Have you seen the, the select board summary? Have you looked at that?
Yeah, I just looked at that this morning.
Okay. So these are my questions, I guess, for you from the. The fire chief references the fire code, so anything related to site plans related to that fire code, you're not seeking any waivers or anything like that. I know it doesn't, it's not our waiver, but he lists a number of things that relate to the site plan. And, you know, I guess, my assumption is that everything will comply with, he refers to the fire code, CMR 527.
I think we've already presented information to show that the site does comply.
Okay.
There was a, we had a firefighting consultant called Code Red, and all that information's in your file.
Yeah.
It was with the previous fire chief, so maybe his current review was not aware or didn't have that material. You know, same with the comment about the hydrants.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we, we met with the fire department and discussed hydro locations with them, and they added some, removed some, and as a result of that correspondence, we have the hydrants where the fire department wanted at that time. Of course, if, if new people that want modifications to that, obviously, we would, you know, at some point, we would need to address that.
Maybe this is a question for Mr.
Of course, if, if new people that want modifications to that, obviously, we would, you know, that, at some point, we would need to address that.
Maybe this is a question for Mr. Chesia, but a lot of different boards have concerns about this runoff in the wellhead. I know the Board of Health was pretty clear about it, I know we're getting a presentation, but and, and a lot of this is state regulations, so again, it's not something that I guess we can really comment on, but is there any, is there any difference between what Mr. Chesia is saying and what you all are saying regarding stormwater runoff and things like that?
I, I think at this point, I, Mr. Chesier and I, from his correspondence, agree that the design meets the requirement of the State Stormwater Management Act.
And do we have, are there local, the Board of Health appears to have in their letter, believes that there's local regulations maybe, or am I not? Do we have no local regulations related to stormwater that might be more restrictive that are allowed under the state law, I guess?
Yeah, you, under the well protection overlay district, as has been mentioned in the past, you're limited to covering more than 15% of the lot within impervious area, or 2,500 square feet, whichever is greater, obviously 15% is greater, and it requires 95% recharge of precipitation, so.
And do your plans-
That's the local regulation, and there's information in there, I believe, from Mr. Horsley regarding that as well, which, you know, we obviously don't agree with his analysis by the interpretation, and we will be addressing that in writing.
Okay, and so are you meeting the 15% or?
We're greater than 15%, but the bylaw allows you to be greater than 15% as long as you recharge the runoff.
Okay.
So, which is what we, what we're proposing.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to-
No, keep going.
This 100 feet of private wells, I don't know if we've resolved that, but seems like you, the way I'm reading it, you can't locate a well, a drinking water well within 100 feet of a dry well, but does that mean that you can't? That also applies the other way, where there's a well, you can't locate a dry well within 100 feet?
Yeah, e- either or, you know, that's how we would, you know, you know, make sure a project complies with, with those regulations. If you look at the response that I wrote and how we responded at the last meeting, the story with the wells in question, where the wells were approved by the Board of Health and installed after, we had drainage systems on the approved HAC, HAC plans, so there's a conflict there that, you know, that has to be resolved in some fashion.
They're not installed yet, though, right?
No, they are installed.
Oh, they are installed on your property?
No, they're not on our property, they're on the Abada's properties, near our property lines.
Okay. But, but, I mean, I guess what I was, I was asking, is the actual, like, physical work done yet on your property?
Yes, yes, the infrastructure that's been done included the drainage system that's within 100 feet of where the current well is.
Okay.
That could be modified, though.
Uh, yes, if we had to modify it, we could modify it.
So the select board letter asks that we have you respond to each of the, the applicant, rather, respond to each of the points from the individual departments, which I would like to see you guys do, and as you said, you read it, you read it this morning, so perhaps at our next meeting, if we could get another, a response from you similar to the one we have from Chesia with the red line, what are your responses to their, to these concerns? And the Board of Health, their comments came in earlier, so I would ask the same for that, that would be really helpful.
Yes.
And, and give us direction on that, okay?
May I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
Kind of a general, quick question, should be easy to answer, will you reiterate and remind me how many bedrooms there will be on the entire property and how many parking spaces there will be on the entire property?
I could answer that.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and-
283 bedrooms and 281 parking spaces, is that, is that right?
Or 291.
Or 291, I don't know what that means.
There were, they're land banged, which I don't know when that came into being, but.
And only 12, I believe out of that 281, there's only 12 for the community building.
And, and those are, that's just the amount of bedrooms, let's say half of those bedrooms had two people in them.
Yeah.
So another 140 people, if we were counting one person per bedroom, and then half of those had two people.
Yeah.
Where's everybody going to park?
Oh, we feel that, you know,
It's year-round housing.
It meets the by, it meets the bylaw even for any other type of project in the town for one space per bedroom, so.
I just don't see that working, I don't know how that's going to work.
Yeah, and I, I don't disagree with you at all, I mean, I think Richmond is a good example of where it didn't work, and they have real parking issues in the, in that community, and I think if, you know, what about if you even want to have a, somebody come for dinner, they're not going to take NERTA.
And let's say-
Where are they going to park, I mean, and you want to be able to have a nice community where people can come and visit and-
I'm just basing it just strictly on bedrooms and parking spaces, which let's just call it even, but let's just say even a quarter
Yeah.
of the 283 bedrooms had two people in each room.
Right.
You know, children, couples, teenagers having their own cars, I just see this, I'm, I'm pulling way back and just looking at it from a very
A global.
far back perspective, I see all kinds of cars just parking on the sidewalks, parking on the shoulders, parking up wherever they can. And at night, it just looks like a mess.
And then access, emergency vehicle access.
And that was a follow-up, are we still going with the plan that just has a single access out to the road for the entire
Well, and so that's a, that's a real concern from the planning board-
Select board and the planning board, yeah.
Yeah, so-
So there's going to be like a traffic jam, if these are what we're expecting to be probably year-round people. And so I just have had a big problem from the beginning that we don't have a current traffic study during the summer on how this overall plan is going to impact everybody else that lives in the area, not to mention the latest news of the New Island Home, that complex, which is very close by, and that traffic. So again, I'm not looking, I'm looking from further back at the overall. I'm, I have a huge concern, and that is going to not only impact the people that live in this development complex, but everybody on Nantucket, so I'm just letting, that is one of my most, my biggest concerns, because Nantucket is already maxed out on their tolerance for traffic, I see this, this is a nightmare in the making.
I can address the traffic and the access, I mean, we've always had emergency access on the plan, a gated one, made of reinforced, reinforced turf, it's going to be grass surface, it's going to be well-defined on the site.
Between 17 and 18.
So, and, you know, obviously, we disagree with the, with the circulation, we feel that there's adequate circulation on the site, both for emergency vehicles and for everyday travel.
I mean, I'm, I'm concerned about emergency vehicles, but I'm more concerned about the everyday people accessing, coming, going, getting out onto, you know, South Shore Road, getting out onto Surfside Road, getting where they need to go every day. I, I'm, I think the traffic study that was done however many years ago, seven, eight, nine, it is irrelevant now, and Nantucket has changed a lot in the last seven, eight, nine years, so I'm, I am, I have a big problem with the traffic that this is going to create, and the bottleneck coming and going from this very concentrated, thickly settled development.
Given the concerns that you've heard from the board, the town, all the various safety departments, the neighbors, now with the, our island home coming down the road, is there any reconsideration about this single entrance plan, I mean, it, the, the planning board, the, it seems like we're hearing from a lot of the town agencies that it would make more sense to have that second egress.
And I'm also forecasting that the town is then going to have to fund a rotary here to manage all the tra- traffic in this space, which is unfair.
That was discussed.
And I think they're paying a-
They're paying a-
You're going to be sure of that?
A portion of it.
In fact, the, the original decision of the board required a traffic mitigation payment of $200,000, which was based upon the 156 unit development, despite the fact that the board actually only approved 60 units. That mitigation payment was upheld by the Housing Appeals Committee in their decision for the 156 units, that mitigation payment has already been remitted to the town, it's already been paid. I, I do want to point out, this is a hearing on a proposed modification, and the, the remand order issued by the Housing Appeals Committee and the Housing Appeals Committee regulations makes it very clear, the only aspects of the project that are to be reviewed when it's a modification are those that are impacted by the modification.
Isn't the modification that you've made it like double the size?
No. The modification, the original project was 156 units.
Yep.
The modification is a change from a mix of condominium units and single-family houses to 156 condominium units, exact same number of units.
I would argue that that change impacts like the entire project.
My interpretation is different.
But it doesn't impact the tra, it, the only impact it has on the offsite traffic issues is a reduction of those impacts.
How about onsite traffic issues? How about onsite traffic issues?
Well, if you have specific onsite traffic questions, we certainly can address those.
I just, I just brought them up, I just said them. With the amount of bedrooms, the amount of bedrooms versus the amount of parking spaces, I just-
Again, so there was an original project that was approved, that project had 380-something bedrooms, it had 260-something parking spaces. Again, that issue is improved by this proposed modification, it is not exacerbated.
Well, well, no, no, no. But it's, wait, hold on, wait, Jim, Lisa, wait. But you're, but you're saying that the default that is, that it's improved by was something that we did not agree to, like, we, the decision we made and went forward with was the 60 units.
But what's in front of you is the, the modification as opposed to what was originally proposed.
Right, but the modification was deemed to be substantial, and so that should have been, instead of doing a technical review, we should have been doing instead of doing the technical review of an, of an approved decision, we should have been doing, it should have been deemed substantial and sent back to us for a, a more thorough review, not just a compliance review.
But that, again, had it happened originally when we filed the, the modification across the Housing Appeals Committee, or now as part of this process, your review is limited to the actual aspects of the project that are impacted by the proposed modification.
Yep, I just think we disagree what those are.
Well, a- again, the, the number of daily vehicle trips, peak hour trips are reduced from 88 trips to 72 trips in the morning peak hour, and from 113 trips to 87 trips in the evening peak hour, total day, daily vehicle trips are reduced from 1,272 trips to 1,142.
Yeah, none of that means anything to me, to tell you the truth, it's fundamentally just looking at this, simple, bedrooms, let's say a quarter of them have two people in them, I don't care if we never met ever before, to me, this is what matters, the amount of bedrooms, how many people are going to be in each bedroom, how many parking spots there are.
And again, the number of bedrooms were greatly reduced
I don't care, I don't care, I don't care.
Were increased, it's a positive impact.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
The remand order says, "Only the changes to the housing proposal or aspects of the proposed affected thereby shall be at issue at the hearing, specifically building types including both architectural style detached dwelling versus apartment or townhouse and tenure," I mean, so number, location, and size of buildings, increases in building heights, I mean, there is an avenue on this remand order.
There's specific language in there as it relates to traffic, and it says, "Offsite traffic impacts are not part of this review."
Number and location of parking spaces, roadway and traffic circulation within the site and offsite traffic impacts if there is evidence that the proposed modification increased those offsite impacts, open space designed within the site, other matters within the scope of remand, that is matters affected by the proposed modifications that are currently unanticipated.
And there's no evidence of any increase in offsite impacts as it relates to traffic, the only evidence that has been presented shows that it'll be a decrease. And that's based on-
When was that? But wait, 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 the, the evidence that shows it was, it's a decrease, that's the traffic study from 2018?
Yes. Well, no, from 2020, so I submitted portions of exhibits from Bob Michaud, who was our traffic consultant, from his prefiled testimony at the Housing Appeals Committee that specifically addresses the reduction in the number of vehicle trips as it relates, as it relates to this modification. The project as originally reviewed by this board had more significant traffic impacts than the project that we're here for now in this modification.
Okay.
Well, Madam Chair, could I ask counsel question?
Sure.
George, this comes up every meeting, and we still haven't addressed it, he's reading off the HAC decision, but if I read off the Superior Court decision, we have a much more open review of these issues, and do we, do we follow, HAC ordered us to do something, the, the court ordered us to do something different, to view this as a whole new project, it's, it's quoted in there, and I just want to
Right, and even under the HAC remand order, it, it's very broad, as Lisa was referring to it, talks about, and this came up at the conference with the presiding officer after the Superior Court's order, because his opinion was, well, the changing in housing type isn't going to affect traffic, and, and I was like, we need an expert to say that, you know, you, you need, it's a totally different form of housing, and if you're talking, you know, what is the intensive use from that, from the change of, you have, you used to have a mix of single-family housing and some smaller, you know, townhouse-style buildings, query, you know, how much of that is occupied and travel going in and out as compared to a project like this that is the large multi-unit meant to be year-round housing units? And the, but if you go under just the HAC remand order after, again, the Superior Court order, it is quite broad, because while the presiding officer initially said that, that, you know, the housing type wasn't likely to, to lead to that, after further discussion, he did end up in the remand order specifically saying roadway, roadways and traffic circulation within the site and offsite traffic impacts if there is evidence from the proposed, that the proposed modifications increased those offsite impacts, that's certainly broad enough for you to be looking at traffic circulation on and off site. The other thing I, I have to say that really complicates this matter and, and it, it makes it difficult, your typical remand on a substantial project change happens very close to the time when you originally hear it.
Right.
So, you know, those traffic studies are in effect at that time, typically, it's a matter of months.
Right.
Here, it's been a matter of years, so
Many years, yeah.
You know, you're, in my opinion, you do have to take into account changed circumstances, and, and I'm sure Attorney Haverty will disagree with me on that, and, and if it ends up on an appeal with Housing Appeals Committee, that's likely to be an issue to be litigated at the Housing Appeals Committee, it's not due to the passage of time, you have to have a broader scope of review to, to deal with changed circumstances as of that time, I think it's a very viable legal issue, and what I would recommend is try to get as much information as you can during the public hearing process to, to flesh out, have a strong record. If you can end up reaching agreement on it and accommodation, you know, If you can end up reaching agreement on it and accommodation, you know, to deal with issues that are of your concern and also the concern of the town comments, then that's fine. If you end up in litigation, you end up with a better record to go on. You know, you're in a difficult spot, too, because, first of all, I should also say, you have the right to have peer review of the traffic study, even if the traffic study that they're relying on is from 2020, you have the right to have peer review of that. Yes, if a peer reviewer goes out and tries to do a traffic count now, it's not all that relevant, it doesn't deal with the summer. Can this board just delay action on this matter before until the summer months? In my opinion, no. I think you'd be acting on kind of treacherous ground if you were to try to do that. You know what I'm saying? In other words, say, well, I'm going to extend the public hearing out six months so that we can get a decent traffic count. I think that that's a perilous position to take. I think that would be difficult to defend. Having said that, the closer you can get to that, some type of expert opinion about what the traffic situation is now, I think would definitely be a relevant part of your proceeding, something that you can look into. That's kind of a long-winded answer to your question, but hopefully it's helpful.
Yeah, it sounds like we have the purview to review this stuff.
In my opinion, yes, you do.
And may I put a little add-on to that? Not only just a traffic study and how it impacts off-site, but I would like.
Sorry, Elise, what exhibit is that you wanted me to show?
It was just the overall plan.
I can pull up a site plan, more or less, if that's.
Yeah. What I'd like to see drawn, I think this will be interesting, is the site plan is, you know, very pretty and shows where everybody's going to park. I'd like a site plan drawn with cars. If everybody's home, it's nighttime, and it's August, I think you scroll, I'd like to see, if everybody's home and everybody's cars are in parking spots, where are all those cars going to be?
Yeah, you're addressing that to me, looking at me.
No, I know.
The applicant is taking that into account.
Added on to, as important as a traffic study that is ancient and doesn't apply anymore, I think, you know, it's very easy to draw pretty plans and green space and all that stuff, but I want to see the plan drawn with 350 cars. Where are they going? Where are they parking?
And in addition to your request, Elise, the applicant, I know this is subsumed within your process, the applicant should really formally respond to those comments that you have from the town.
Yes, absolutely.
Which is in the list.
It would behoove.
Yes.
The applicant really to do an updated traffic study. Even if you can't do accurate counts, bring it up to date about where are you getting, what's the basis for your opinion, saying that there's going to be a lessened traffic impact from this project? One thing that came up while I'm standing here, another, for instance, the fire chief noted questions, you know, and state code compliance. It would benefit, it doesn't matter that the applicant dealt with the fire chief before, your fire chief now is raising those issues. They need to review this plan with them. And you are, you're not, it's not that you did the wrong review before, you did a review before in a different context. You were confirming that the final plans confirmed, conformed with the HAC decision. The HAC decision is not operative. There is no operative permit. So what you're doing is you're comparing the project change to the original project proposal that was before you so many summers ago. But you, it's not that you did anything incorrect, you're just doing a different analysis now, and it involves a totally different scope of issues. You have the ability to rule on this project. That means a denial or an approval with conditions. Those conditions, as you know from the last time around, can involve a lot of types of issues. If it ends up, and I'm not saying that this is going to be your opinion, if you end up thinking that this is too dense of a project because of onsite traffic circulation, safety issues, off-site concerns, buffer zones, issues from, you know, raised by interested parties or abutters, you have the ability to condition the permit. You had 156-unit proposal the first time around, you ended up with an approval with conditions of 60 units. Yes, that was overturned by the Housing Appeals Committee, but there is no operative permit as a result of that process, because their decision was overturned and it's been sent back to you. So, yes, you are limited to the proposed project change, but it's a significant change. And there's a wide range of issues presented by the change in the housing type, and the unclear issue of current circumstances.
Right.
That you have to be able to take those into account now. You can't look at this without reality. So.
Could I ask you a question about, there is obviously a big difference between the 66 that we approved in our first comprehensive permit that they appealed, or 60?
60.
60. And what Mr. Haverty is talking about is what was first submitted as 156 units. And my recollection with that plan, and that's one thing that it would be interesting to have a copy of that plan, just to see how it differs from what we're looking at today. I do remember that there were a lot of single-family residential, there were two means in and out of the site. There are a lot of differences that I think are, would be important for particularly Elise and John, who were not sitting on the project when it was first submitted to us, you know, five years ago, to see what Mr. Haverty is referring to when he says the original permit application, because it's not what we approved as a CBA, it's nothing near what we approved. And I think looking at that difference between what is presented to us now would just be helpful for me to, you know, help me remember where we started.
Yeah, it should absolutely be part of your record. If it isn't, another, you know, the request should be made.
Right.
That should be presented, got to be part of your process.
Yeah, it has to, because he keeps referring to it. The other thing, and the table helps, certainly, but it doesn't show the full scope of some of the issues that are being brought up. And then the other thing, just relative to Elise's comments with the parking, I completely agree with her that, I mean, we don't have any information on how much this project is going to cost to build, what the, what the cost of the units will be, will that require couples being in a one-bedroom where they're both driving, where they do need two cars, or somebody that owns a unit that then has to rent out a second bedroom to help pay for that unit. And so I think even if this meets the parking requirements of the town, it's inadequate. We all know that nobody's going to take the NERDA to work unless it may be work downtown and that's easy, you know, so. And I think if you want to make this a successful year-round community, these issues have to be addressed, even if they're not required by the code. And, you know, I think it's something we, as a board, really need to think about, making this project successful. And it's not going to be successful if people can't park and leave freely, and.
Right. And, you know, issue beyond parking adequacy, buffers, off-site traffic impacts, open space concerns are also well within your province. So what I'd recommend you start to do is use your public hearing time as much as you can, sharpen the pencils, get out the issues that you would like to have addressed. And remember, in 40B, sometimes an issue isn't technically within your jurisdiction, but it's part of the give and take of a 40B. And, you know, there was a disagreement with HAC along the way in this process, but the state does encourage in their published guidelines, a give and take in the 40B process, that they recognize that a developer is being given a great benefit with the relief that they can get from 40Bs. So it calls for a negotiation and a give and take that would be well-served in your public hearing process. So the more of this information that you can kind of identify and get to the developer and develop that record, the better off you'll be. You know, you don't want to have to reconstruct everything after, you know, you've had to render the decision. So the more you can address the applicant during the public hearing while it's open, the better, and not, you know, during your deliberations, because at the deliberations, you can't take any input, as you know, so.
Can I, one follow-up question, since we're happy, George? The, and, and, Elise, you bring a good point, and this is, I made the statement last meeting, that to me, that's kind of the stake in the ground, what we approved, not these, they went from whatever the original was, they knocked it down to 100, remember? And then they went back. So to me, if we approved the, I don't, I didn't, but this board approved it, that should be kind of our stake in the ground, you know, in terms of measuring it. But, George, in terms of.
Can I just say something, too, Jim? While you raise that issue, interestingly, I, you know, the town has always been well-served by Tucker Holland, who's here today. I said hello to him, it was good to see him. In the HAC litigation, Tucker had filed prefiled testimony, we worked on it. And actually, his testimony, sworn testimony to the Housing Appeals Committee was the change to an all condo, you know, an all condo building, to him, as the housing director at the time, was a good development, it was a step in the right direction. His prefiled testimony had some issues about open space and concerns like that, but, you know, that issue has come up before about the different housing type, what really did make the most sense for the site. If you remember originally, you know, you had that original plan, and then during the process, as you vetted it further, there were working groups, and it ended up with a substantially different plan during that process, with a 100-unit plan that was developed in a much different way. And then you ended up deliberating on it, the hearing time was very short after that, so you didn't have much time to vet it back and forth with the developer, and then you ended up reducing it from the 100 to the 60. That's where you went. But, you know, these issues of like the type of housing and what impact that is, has always been a part of this process.
Right. And I think this is why some of the HCC comments are appropriate to talk about, because.
And I'm sorry, Jim, I.
Yeah, just a quick question. When it was initially appealed, our decision, was the uneconomic portion addressed?
Yes, so.
Or did they just change the development without?
Actually, I'm glad you raised that issue, because, you know, changed circumstances to, at the time I originally advised the board, I had quite a bit of 40B experience, including one of the cases that went to the Supreme Judicial Court, one of the landmark decisions, et cetera. Since that time, my practice has pretty much been 40B, and, you know, for better or worse. So, you know, that issue comes up a lot. And how did you, what was your question again, Jim?
Was that ever, you know, the whole point of the appeal?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, uneconomic, but I'm not sure.
The reason I'm boring you with my experience over the last several years of litigation at the HAC, what I've found happens is, even when your public hearing gets continued, you end up with a decision, and you never had a dialogue with the developer where you say, look, we're going to reduce, we're going to cut this building, or we're going to reduce the numbers, and we're doing that because of X, Y, Z reasons, stormwater management, impervious surface, off-site traffic, whatever that may be. If it's during the public hearing, then the developer has to come back to you and say, no, that renders my project uneconomic. And then you have the right to get the project pro forma, and you go through that analysis, you have the right to look at that. And what I'm saying, my experience over the past several years, is the public hearing is always chewed up for that process. And what developers do, and I'm not, you know, ascribing any nefarious purpose to this developer at all, this isn't specific to this developer, but what developers do is, when then it's to HAC, they do have that burden, that they have, if it's an approval with conditions, they have the burden to, first of all, prove that the conditions render the project uneconomic. And at that time, you're stuck after the fact. The board never had a chance to look at it.
Yeah.
It's very hard to get financial analysts who will credibly challenge project pro formas at that stage.
Right.
So it's not like you have dueling experts at that point, you have kind of a disadvantage at that point, because the developer, for the first time, is presenting a pro forma, and then you're left scrambling, trying to review that and cross-examine on that at the HAC. So that's what would happen here. If you run out of the time of the hearing, you won't even get to the dialogue with the developer about, well, this renders, that condition renders this uneconomic, so that you'd be able to look at that issue a little bit.
And this was addressed, at least, at the HAC one.
And that's what happened in this appeal, the initial time was, it was an approval with conditions.
Right.
The developer appealed, they had to make a prima facie case that it complied with state or federal requirements or generally accepted practices. They also had to prove before the burden shifted to the board, that the conditions, i.e. the reduction of the 60 units, rendered the project uneconomic. And they did present a pro forma at the Housing Appeals Committee in the evidence. We addressed it, we addressed it with real estate comps, and we did the analysis in response. We had an expert that wasn't as helpful as Tucker was, and at the time you had Ken Bogrand, who helped us cross-examine the developer at the trial on that issue of project economics. So they did make that claim, and the HAC found in their favor on the issue.
Are we unable to ask for financial information in advance?
You are, in my opinion, you don't have the jurisdiction to ask for the project financials for pro forma analysis in advance. You have the right to ask for it if you are contemplating conditions, and you say to the developer, we're denying X, Y, Z waiver, or we're reducing this, or we're changing that, or we're conditioning it accordingly, you know, what's your response to that? If they say at that point during your public hearing, that renders my project uneconomic, then you can ask for it. But, you know, until you get there, you don't really have the right to look at it. Having said that, that's different from the issue of like housing type and the repercussions of an all, of a large condo building, year-round housing, that type of thing. So those types of issues, and you were touching on those earlier in these questions, those are well within your province to ask about. You can't get into details that intrude on the subsidizing agency in terms of the housing, but there is a range of questions that's relevant to your considerations, where you go into, get a little more detail about the type of housing that's proposed here.
Susan, I have one other question, though, in terms of, and I don't know how to ask this, well, I can ask you, and they might not have to answer it, but just in terms of maintenance fees, condo fees, you know, what's going to keep this development up and running? How much is that going to cost people that are living there to keep this development in good shape? Is that something that we can discuss?
Yeah, I think you can get into those issues. I think what I would recommend you do, and I don't mean this to be facetious at all, I would recommend you ask whatever it is you think relevant. And the developer can say, well, we're not providing you that information, or that's strictly within the province of the subsidizing agency. But don't censor yourself.
But we can ask, yeah.
Ask.
Yeah, okay.
And let's start to think about those issues that we want to present to them. They'll lay, they'll respond, you know, and they can respond by saying, we're not going to give you that information, or that's strictly for the subsidizing agency, or we're developing that, we don't know the details until, you know, X, Y, Z happens.
Okay, I have one other follow-up question, I'm sorry to take so much time, but I thought that the profit was capped at 14%. Is it, is that correct, or is it 20?
Yeah, it's not 14%.
It's 20?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that was one question.
And, you know, an interesting thing about project economics, a developer can actually complain and be upheld because they want to do an uneconomic project, and they say that your conditions are rendering it more uneconomic. But we get into, when we get into those issues.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for Attorney Pucci at this time? No?
Can we, I have some more questions for Don.
Yeah, for, sorry, for Mr. Bracken or Mr. Haverty?
Mr. Bracken.
Okay, okay.
I just want to clarify on the parking. Do we, we need to hear from, we've heard a lot from. Do we, we need to hear from, we've heard a lot from developers' counsel here.
Well, we haven't.
I just want to address some of the.
Just hold on one second, hold on one second. We're still, we still haven't even gotten through Mr. Haverty's, or Mr. Haverty's letter that he's responded back. I have a question on the second page. We haven't even gotten that far, so.
I just, we were talking about parking and I just.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And the comments from the town. So the parking, the one parking spot per bedroom is, that's within the cup?
Yeah, and I think on our parking table, we reference it, there is, well, it doesn't specifically say anything about condominiums or apartment buildings. So the closest thing was a garage apartment, requires one space per bedroom. I think that we put that on the parking schedule.
Yeah, so my follow-up, so you asked for a waiver. Waiver requested to the extent required in order to allow for parking as shown on the plan. So why are you asking for a waiver?
What page are you on, Jim?
I'm looking at the waiver.
Oh, the waiver list?
So if you comply, you comply and we can't really do anything with that.
Although I don't know that you can use, he's saying that this building type, you know, there's nothing to reference, so they're referencing a garage apartment. That's a very different situation than a 16-unit condo development. I don't know that that's the correct.
Right, and that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, so I think we can.
I think there are a lot of waivers that were requested that we most likely don't need, but they're routinely requested in case we need it, in case things like this come up where it's up to interpretation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Attorney Haverty, you were up and you were going to say something. I had a couple of questions on your responses, but did you have, you were standing there for a while, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to some of George's comments as it related to the traffic. We're not going to do a new traffic study, but I can certainly submit the entire prefiled testimony, including exhibits that was submitted from our traffic consultant, Bob Mischow, during the Housing Appeals Committee process. So that would include the original traffic study, the updated traffic study after we proposed the modification. It addresses the reduction in the number of vehicle trips and I think that should answer your questions. As related to the point that you could retain a peer review consultant and that it might not make sense for them to go out and do a vehicle trip count, that's not something that's allowed under the peer review process anyways. Peer review consultant can only review work that has been produced and submitted by the project proponent. It is not allowed to be used for the creation of independent studies. Certainly if the town wanted to do a traffic study in that area, you know, in paper itself, it's certainly within its rights to do that, but you can't require the applicant to pay for that. Regarding the pro forma question that was just discussed, I'm happy to submit the prefiled testimony from the board's economic consultant, Laurie Gould, that's a public record. That will have the information that was requested as it relates to the condo fees and things of that nature, so that should be of assistance to you. The regulations are very clear that a board can't require an applicant to submit peer review, I'm sorry, a pro forma for peer review until the board has completed all consultant review and has provided a draft decision with waiver, with conditions in waiver decisions. And then the reason for that is because there's really nothing to review unless there is a decision to compare it to. If you have a question as to whether a, you know, a particular set of conditions in waiver decisions is going to cause an applicant to claim that it renders the project uneconomic, you have the right to provide that to the applicant and ask them if they disagree with those proposed conditions in waiver decisions, to provide you a pro forma indicating that it does render the project uneconomic. But until that process occurs, you don't have the right to request it, but we're happy to provide what's already public record and was submitted during the HAC proceeding.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, so that's, can we hear the other side's response? I mean, Mr. Haverty seems to lay out everything we need to do, but that's one side of it and we're giving him a lot of time and the opponents need to also, in a public hearing, address these things. Because there are differing views.
I, yep, I 100% agree with you there.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment too. That process about the pro forma, that was what I was explaining. And what happens is Paul represents a developer in this instance, you know, what they, what developers do, let's call a spade a spade, is they'll run out the clock on you and then they make the claim when it's to Housing Appeals Committee, to the receptive audience. And that's just, and again, it's not meant to be disparaging to this developer, but that's just the way these go. But basically the process that Paul explained is correct, but what happens is you'll run out of hearing time. So you won't ever get to that point that you can have, you know, that approval with conditions to be able to go back and forth on that issue. You know, in the traffic study, I understand that about peer review, that you can't have a peer reviewer do the traffic count. That's not my point. I mean, somebody should be doing a traffic count and to do it now is not that meaningful for when you're really talking about the project impact. So that's what I'm talking about is that to the extent you can develop that record as much as possible for whatever information you can come up with, I would recommend you do that. And that would include a peer review of whatever the developer ends up, their final, here's take it or leave it, here's my final traffic analysis on this and you can either accept it or reject it. You certainly have the right to have a peer reviewer look at that.
Madam Chair, just related to the, to the traffic study, so the, the new housing, what do you call it? Island home, they did a traffic study, a recent one, and I don't know if we, we can piggyback on that because they monitored traffic, did traffic counts during the summer and they use that data to extrapolate things based on their development, but why couldn't we take that data and extrapolate that?
I'm sure it's a public record.
Yeah, you could. I mean, I would recommend.
We should get a copy of it.
I would recommend you make that part of your record and that would potentially, you know, and I hate to make it sound like you're just headed toward litigation. Maybe you're not.
Well, you just want to be prepared.
It would benefit the process because litigation at that point, you're going to have whatever witnesses are available, able to testify and who have relevant information, including expert witnesses and you, you know, you may need that for that process. So definitely, I think you want to definitely have that come in. One thing that has happened with the hearing too, if you don't mind, Susan, I did want to clarify, you're not going to hold interested parties to a strict three-minute time limit, is my understanding. If it's okay if I mention that, I was not at the last hearing session, which I apologize for. What I do, you know, interested parties have the right to talk, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding. So you certainly as chair have the right to run the meeting though. If people are overly repetitive or, you know, repeating each other or ad hominem attacks, whatever it may be, you have the right to move things along. But I would recommend that, you know, you allow people to make whatever comments that they have and also it should be made clear, which I'm making it clear right now, if somebody hasn't been heard on something as these issues come up, you'll have time and you can set aside some time that they can address, you know, make comments that they haven't had a chance to make during the time. And where, you know, where there's been kind of a back and forth a little bit on some of these issues, after you deal with the board's questions, developer's response, I would open it up maybe to.
Yeah, I'm trying. I'm, we still, we're on page two.
No, no, but.
There's a lot of stuff.
I know there is, but I'm just saying like, you know, the questions by the board and then the next thing on my little list is go to the public, but we're still on questions by the board and we're.
Madam Chair, could I?
Ask a question? Sure.
When it goes, well, when it gets, goes to traffic, we only have something from our traffic director and these summaries from the select board, which I think are inappropriate, but, because it's just a sub-organization. Why can't we get, and we requested this the last time, our traffic person to come in and answer questions? Because I think it actually works to the developer's advantage if traffic volumes have increased overall, based on what I've read, in terms of what they contribute. So it's actually advantageous to them because their percentage share goes down. But I, we don't, we need his input. This is an important issue.
I don't think we've asked him to come in.
Yeah.
I thought you did last.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, was he available?
We should expect all these department heads and.
To be here.
To be here.
Yeah.
I'm not, I don't want to rely on the select board's summary.
Did you talk to? I did talk to Mike and I was trying to get him to come for today's meeting, but he had, he had a prior engagement that he couldn't get out of. And then the only thing there, I think Mike uses specific, I'm not 100% sure, so I don't want to misspeak, but I think Mike uses a specific peer review, like peer traffic review entity for these things. So I believe he could forward that to them. I'll have to check these things with Mike Burns.
You know, all these, all these department heads should be here. I mean, we've had, we've had meetings before where the police, fire chief sits through meetings, we don't even get to them, but he's here. Instead, they're kind of hiding behind this, this select board summary of issues and I think it benefits this board for them to come in here so we can ask them questions and clarification. So I just want to make that, that known that we.
Let's, okay, let's see if that's a possibility after the new year to get them, to see if we can have, I would be, I think it would be helpful to do that when we have Mr. Bracken or Mr. Haverty's responses to the Board of Health, like, like just how he did with this with the red, like have that for the next meeting or, you know, submitted before the next meeting for the Board of Health and the select board letters. And then if we have the heads of the department here, that can, they would be better rather than, you know, have them respond to that right there. I mean, because I would like to hear about this second entrance, about the emergency, about safety having to do with, you know, lighting and traffic and all of that. Okay.
Just, and one more comment on this, I want to piggyback on what George said. I think it's an important point. This is how I view things and I think the board should take it into account, is that besides the Superior Court ruling that said we view this as a new project, so our review is broad, the substantial change review didn't, I don't think, contemplates five years later, we're looking at these changes. It contemplates substantial change, we review it, turn it around, you know, we're going to build a pool instead of a tennis court. But this is, I mean, it's not realistic for us to use some of the things that we would typically not be allowed to use because it's been five years and the traffic study's a great example of that. And I think we should just proceed however and take the borrower, I mean, the developer's comments in that fashion.
All right. I had a question about the, this is a detail in here, but that, when it talks about the, Chessia.
Madam Chair, did you say you were on page two?
Yeah, page two of your letter.
Which number?
Number five.
Number five, thank you.
Which was going, I think, from Chessia's. So it's talking about the constructing the sidewalk from the proposed entrance north to Surfside Road as discussed by MEPA. And then the hack approved plans include an easement for a sidewalk, but the current plans that we have does not have that. And then your response is that it was not required as part of MEPA and now including the sidewalk easement would infringe on the 50-foot buffer at the front of the project, contrary to the MEPA approval. So I'm just curious, like when we're talking about these plans going back and forth, like when did the sidewalk disappear and what plan is that on and how are we, how did it get taken out?
So I will rely upon Don in terms of what's shown on what plan, but ultimately the MEPA process and the modification submittal occurred very close in time. But the MEPA approval requires that 50-foot buffer in the front of the property. So we can give you a plan that shows an easement, but it would never be able to be constructed because there's actually now a deed restriction through the natural heritage process that requires us to keep that buffer undisturbed.
So it's, so there's.
So we could show it on a plan, but it's not, it's never going to be able to get constructed because it would violate the MEPA approval and the restriction.
So people will have to cross over onto the bike path that's on the other side of Surfside, I mean, South Shore Road.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
I would think safety trumps something like that.
Yep, I agree. So we'll have to look at that.
And Madam Chair, I know that you're anxious to get to the neighbors and their comments, so I don't intend to make any presentation in my letter, I'll just answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you. I can skip. We already went over that. My other question was about the pro forma, which we already went over. Okay, so those were, those were my questions that I just wanted clarification from you. The other ones I had, we've talked about with everybody else's questions. Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Haverty before we go to the public or Mr. Chessia, do you have anything that you wanted to add before we move on to members of the public?
Only thing I guess I might say on the sidewalk issue or whatever, I don't know that it's necessarily mutually exclusive, that they couldn't have had the 50-foot, I mean, they cleared it. If it wasn't cleared, you would still have the ability to have 50 feet.
Right, they just have to move it in a little bit.
They have to move their site a little bit. I mean, it's like because it's already been started, it's kind of a self-imposed hardship, in my opinion.
Yeah.
I mean, the sidewalk was shown within that 50-foot area, it was not shown further inside, that's.
But you could have adjusted the plan, is the bottom line that I'm trying to say here. The plan could have been adjusted to have both or it could have been towards the street side and you move in the buffer.
Yeah, that's a good point, okay. Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Chessia, before I go to the public?
I'm all set, I think.
Could I, so.
Yeah.
One specific question, Mr. Chessia. So there's a reference to outdoor lighting. Did you, I don't know if this falls within your purview, but did you get a lighting plan initially on this?
I don't believe there's been one of those submitted, but I could be wrong. I don't recall looking at it usually when, I'm not a lighting expert, but I think I can look at the numbers and see if the light shines outside. I believe their response was that, excuse me, they were, they asked for a waiver, but then they said they would comply, I think, with the, the current, the current regulations, which I think have changed. I think that's in Mr. Haverty's letter, the last comment.
Yeah, what I stated was that we would accept a condition that requires compliance with that, presuming, you know, that the rest of the decision is accepted.
Yeah, I was a little confused. So long as part of the approval with conditions that in the aggregate render the project uneconomic, so.
Do not render the project uneconomic.
Oh, okay. I figured that.
I get ahead of myself sometimes.
So there is not a lighting plan? Do we know?
I don't think so.
I don't believe there is, but maybe Don would know or.
And it's pretty typical for that to be something that's submitted with the final plans, that are generally reviewed during the course of the local hearing process. It's not on the list of required submittal items in the HAC regulations.
Okay.
Okay. So if the board is satisfied at this point, I'd like to move on to members of the public if anyone has anything to add to what we've discussed or has comments, questions.
Can we, can we just hear, this isn't just, can we hear the, the opponents? That's not just.
Well, the members of the public could be opponents, proponents, just concerned, whoever, so.
They're a party to this, just as much as the developer.
Well, they're not, they're not a party, but they have the opportunity to speak for sure, but I have, you were to the, you were to the microphone. sure. But I have, you were to the, you were to the microphone first, so if you could just state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Kate, can you hear me?
Yep.
I'm Kate Raphael.
Hi.
I'm in a butter. And I'm actually standing here because of the whole conversation about traffic, and I hate to make you circle back to traffic. But the information that you were seeking, actually, came forward on the planning board October 15. And not only were they discussing Sherburne Commons, but they were discussing Surfside Crossing. And the Sherburne Commons people did do a study, and what I took pictures of was the crash data summary for not only Surfside Road and South Shore Road, but also My Comet Road and Surfside Road and that crossing, because horror of horrors, the planning board decided that maybe they should be considering using the piece of property they purchased on My Comet Road to be one of their exits. And so it was really appropriate that this crash data summary, and they have PM level of service and AM level of service for Surfside, South Shore Road, Surfside, Fairgrounds, and My Comet. And it's, it's where they're crossing. They have all this information. And so I would highly, I beg you to look that over because it's really terrifying, especially the information they had about the level, the crash data summary from My Comet Road, Surfside Road, and Surfside Drive, 10 crashes, two injuries, MassDOT Highway Safety Improvement Program Crash Cluster. They consider it a crash cluster site. And they have, they want to have an all-safety action plan. And can if you imagine if Surfside Crossing started, you know, pushing people down onto My Comet Road, which is what, 12 feet wide? It's insane. I mean, when they were doing My Comet Preserve down the road, and Holgate Partners were coming down the road in those big trucks, there wasn't even room for myself and my dog to walk. You had to get up onto the grass so they could pass. They basically took up the whole road. So my concern is, if you're going to funnel more traffic onto My Comet Road, as narrow as it is, and they really have no way to widen it, because you've got the My Comet Development, and then you've got the dog park across the street. And I just, it's frightening me that they're, that the planning board was thinking that this might be a way to alleviate traffic issues off of South Shore Road onto Surfside. Because to me, what it would do, it would create two cluster crash sites. It would just increase the insanity on more than just one place. And now they're talking about a rotary or a roundabout or something there on South Shore Road, Surfside, Cross, whatever. Anyway, I just, I hope you will, that's where you'll find the information, is the October 15 planning board meeting, okay?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And just to note, they used, for the development, they used the approved plan for, for factoring in the, the traffic from this development.
They used which one?
They used what we approved, the board approved, the 90, 60
60.
60 unit in their assumption. So that just tells you.
Okay.
They didn't use
They didn't use the new plan.
Mr. Terenceus?
I have a lot to say, but because of the lateness of the hour, and given the fact that the land council has prepared a presentation and has brought experts and so on, I'd like to defer to them and pick up after
Okay.
they have that chance.
Sure. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Okay, so the Nantucket Land and Water Council, you guys have, you brought Mr. Horsley with you? Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair. Horsley's on the screen.
Okay.
Mr. Reardon's here in the audience.
Okay.
I was going to introduce the topic.
Sure.
Just briefly. Excuse me, I'm Dennis Murphy from the Land and Water Council. As you may know, Nantucket is a sole-source aquifer. Everyone gets their water from the same groundwater supply. The project site is in a Zone 2, which is a protected area under state law to protect the quality of the aquifer. It's also within the public wellhead recharge area, which is a local bylaw. And there are two overlapping laws that affect what you can develop within these zones that are public drinking water supplies. There's the state drinking water standards, and then there's your own local bylaw. They can't, you don't have anything to say. You, you can't waive state standards. But in this case, the local bylaw is slightly stricter, but they overlap in the following sense. In the Zone 2 and the wellhead recharge area, you can only develop up to 15% impervious coverage unless you have two things. One, a system for recharge, and number two, no degradation of groundwater quality. And what I think you heard earlier today is that this doesn't affect our project because we do have a system for recharge. Mr. Reardon, the engineer, will speak to that issue. There's been no analysis and nothing in the record before the board about groundwater quality, which Mr. Horsley will address in a moment. The reason I raise this as a legal issue is your own town council and I have another 40B in another town that is located in a Zone 2. It's Walpole Darwin Commons. It was just decided last year. This issue came up. Some of the same experts were involved. In that case, they actually denied the comprehensive permit. The exceedance in that case was even less than this one. So in this case, the applicant is asking to create over 50%, 52% impervious coverage. And on your table of comparisons, you'll see that this is not an issue that would have been flagged by the board five years ago, because this new project is actually almost a full acre of new impervious coverage, 38,000 square feet, a 26% increase. And so in Walpole, it was only 45% or 46%. Here it's 52%. This is a major issue, and it is an issue for this board, because the Board of Health doesn't hear this. They gave you a letter on this issue. The state DEP doesn't hear this, because their drinking water regulation relies on the municipality enacting its own local protections, which now you have to adjudicate. So the clear thing is, can they exceed 15%? Only if they show no degradation of groundwater quality. So Mr. Reardon's going to speak to the stormwater issues, and Mr. Horsley, if you'll allow him, on the water resource issues. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Sean Reardon. I'm a licensed civil engineer in Massachusetts. I've been in practice for over 30 years. My practice is almost exclusively, maybe 80% on the land development side, where I'm a civil engineer permitting and designing land development projects. Like George, over the course of the last, let's say, five to 10 years, I've been increasingly asked to partake in 40B reviews. I was actually the towns review engineer in Walpole. John Chessia was the outside consultant, so we sort of switched processes. But mostly, I, I live in the stormwater world. I live in the site civil design world. I was asked to come to take a look at this. I have a relationship with Dennis and the folks at the Water Council, just as a fresh look. And unlike a lot of projects I get involved with, I had the luxury of sort of stepping back, because from my perspective, John does a very thorough, excellent review of all the details, which was a, you know, a relief for me not to have, to be burdened with all the, the very detailed matters. Clearly, the engineer, I was immediately taken by the quality of their submission. So clearly, the engineer knows what they're doing. So that, again, freed me up to sort of look at with a fresher perspective, some of the larger matters. And, and what I came away with was basically one issue that was foundational in my mind, was that contrary to some of the statements in the application, contrary to some of the discussion, the project does not meet the stormwater standards. And in particular, something that's very pertinent to this discussion, because it has to do almost exclusively with protecting water quality. When we as engineers design projects, stormwater really is kind of a three-legged stool. You know, one, you have, we need to control the rate of runoff, which is, you don't want to have any more runoff leaving your site than, than does under pre-development conditions to keep impacts from hurting other people. The second is, you want to make sure you're not removing any of the water that used to go into the ground. Because as you can imagine, if, if you take that water out, put it in a pipe and let it flow somewhere else, it's not available to recharge the groundwater. The third is, you don't recognize that when you build a development, you're fundamentally changing the quality of the runoff that comes from your site. So under pre-development conditions, you had, water would hit the ground here, percolate through vegetation and other harmless conditions. Under post-development, you have 52% impervious coverage, most of which is pavement, which has a lot of contaminants on it. Stormwater standards specifically develop guidelines for how you have to treat that water that comes off the pavement. And in this case, the project hasn't, has clearly not met those standards. They apply a much higher standard when you're in a wellhead protection area or when you're in a Zone 2. In this case, the standards require you use very specific measures when you're in a Zone 2. Those measures usually include some sort of filtration component. Makes perfect sense, right? Because if I have a contaminants coming off of pavement, I, I need some way to bind those things up that otherwise are allowed to go straight into the ground. In this case, the applicant has proposed, you know, is taking care of two of the legs of the stool. They absolutely deal with the rate appropriately. They absolutely recharge the groundwater, in my opinion, to the, to the correct standard. But what they haven't done is appropriately treated that groundwater, or treated that runoff before it went into the ground. In this case, it's particularly problematic, because essentially, by combining the recharge component with the water quality component, they're just introducing all those contaminants directly into the groundwater. And they do it in a, and I don't want to say hidden way, but unfortunately, nowadays, the prevalence of these underground structures is, to me as an engineer, is a bit concerning, because when you have a, a stormwater pond or something at the surface, you get a lot of treatment from vegetation, you get a lot of filtration through the soil, and you've got an opportunity to intercept things and to notice things when they become a problem. When all of the storage is put below ground, all you see is the catch basin at the surface. If, if, if something goes into that catch basin, there's no way you're going to know about it until it becomes a problem. So my concern is that there's an overwhelmingly reliant, overwhelming reliance on underground detention that's out of sight, out of mind, that does not meet an explicit requirement of a stormwater standards, which is, you cannot use underground detention, subsurface structures, as a means of meeting your treatment obligation. So in this case, they have not adequately pretreated, or haven't adequately treated their runoff before it's allowed to introduce into the ground. And I think it's something that, in my mind, needs to be addressed, because the solutions that are allowed are usually at-grade filtration systems, like basins or natural features that inevitably take up space and will inevitably result in changes to the site plan.
Jim, you can ask a question.
Thank you. Are there methodologies that would accomplish this, you know, filtering out of?
Yeah, there are very, there are, I provided a letter, there are very specific measures. There's a term we use in the industry called BMPs, which refer to best management practices. They're basically a menu of different things you can employ to, to do different things. So the, the stormwater handbook has a menu of BMPs that are allowed specifically in these applications, in applications where you're in a Zone 2, or you're in what's called a LUPL. That, that menu of allowable treatment systems is very specific, and, and the project has not used one of those allowable systems.
Okay.
So your answer is, yes, there are systems.
Okay.
But they all take, they, they take up space and take up design time.
Can we hear the rest of their presentation?
Yeah, they're not done yet. I'd like, I'd like to hear, I'd like, I'd like to hear the whole presentation and then yeah, no, he's done, but then, then the other, right, you're, you're done with yours.
Yeah, and what I'd ask, I try to express everything in a public forum, but I do spend a lot of time putting my words on paper so that you
We have all the details.
Yeah. It's a very, it's a more thorough description and, you know,
Yep.
more articulate on paper than I can be in person.
Yep, no, I have notes to go back and look at the details. I think, yeah, given the time, I'd like, I'd like to hear the second part and then have you address the stormwater.
It'd be better for our memories for me to do it now, because it really
Two different things.
And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be
Okay, all right, all right, go ahead.
Okay, again, Don Bracken, Bracken Engineering. Obviously, we're going to reply to that report in writing. We just, we just read that this morning as well. I'll just go on record saying that, you know, we, we disagree with Mr. Reardon's opinion that we don't comply with the Stormwater Management Act. A lot of that is hinged on his opinion that we're land used with higher pollution loads, which we don't feel we are. I'll, I'll stop with that and then just add that, you know, as, as far as the designs that are done and approved on this town in compliance with the Stormwater Management Regulations, our proposed design has more treatment than probably any other design that's been approved under these same standards on Nantucket.
Mr. Mr. Horsley? Is it Horsley?
Yes.
Horsley, okay, sorry about that. Mr. Horsley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And with your permission, I'd like to share my screen. I have a few
Yeah, Scott, you're, you're able to share your screen if you click the button.
For some reason, let's see, I have an, an issue here. Hold on one second. I may have to rejoin the summoner. Let me try this again. Hold on. Here we go. Okay, can you see my first slide here?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. My apologies for that delay. So, yeah, I would like to follow up with what Sean has said. Our, our reviews overlapped a little bit, and I'll just say I do agree with his finding about the non-compliance with the stormwater standards. And as I'll get to, my experience includes here in the third bullet, you can see, as a member of the Mass DEP Stormwater Advisory Committee that actually developed these standards. But I do have over 30 years' experience, mostly for US EPA, working nationally, as well as many municipalities, states and nonprofits. I, I have served as an expert witness and have been qualified as a hydrologist in many courts, including one federal case on behalf of the Department of Justice and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. I served on a number of DEP committees, as I said, including the Stormwater Committee. I also am adjunct staff at both Harvard and Tufts on these similar matters. So as Dennis Murphy said earlier, the site is within the Zone 2. I don't think there's any debate about that, so I'm not going to spend any time on it. I do want to just, in my work for EPA, we spend a lot of time, I've worked in 50 states, explaining exactly what a Zone 2 is and why we're very concerned about land uses. So this is a 3D cutaway showing a pumping well and the area that contributes to the well, which is highlighted here, that gets projected up to the land surface. And in Massachusetts, we call these things Zone 2 areas. Nationally, they're called wellhead protection areas. These are considered of the highest, most sensitive areas, really, any place with the highest water quality standards. So the Zone 2 area is critically important. As Dennis mentioned, there are actually two different levels of regulation that are applicable here. One that Sean just spoke about, that's the state stormwater standards. But in addition to that, we also have the Nantucket bylaw. And, and I do want to reiterate, this bylaw is something that is required by state regulations, particularly the Massachusetts drinking water standards. For the Wanta Comet Water Company to operate, or any public water supply, they need to develop their own local bylaw, because that's how the system works. The state doesn't plan to sit in on every development proposal. That's, that's, that's a municipal That's, that's, that's a municipal process. So, municipality must have a bylaw. And there's, and there's a lot of latitude in terms of what the, what the local government can do. What Nantucket has drafted is quite similar to the state minimum requirements, but they've added something important here. But I'll just paraphrase it here, much like the state requirements. And I should mention, this 15% is pretty, pretty common going around the country. This number first came from the Center for Watershed Protection in Maryland and a number of publications by EPA, where both of those organizations team that, once you get beyond around that point, the load of pollutants, and I'm going to use load a couple times, load is sort of the mass, the amount of pollutants coming to, into the water body become problematic. And that's why that 15% is a common threshold. So, in Nantucket, they, they use that 15%. And up to 15%, you can do what I'll call conventional stormwater infiltration. And I'm going to describe the system that's proposed, a conventional one. Everybody's doing it. Subsurface stormwater infiltration. That's the norm, but that's for a normal conventional project. Now, the two standards.
Mr. Horstley, could you speak, could you speak up a little bit? We're just having trouble, a little trouble hearing you.
Okay, I'm guessing it may be on your end because I'm speaking quite loudly, but I'll, I'll speak even louder.
Okay, thank you.
Is this better? Okay. So, the two standards that are in the Nantucket Bylaw is, and Mr. Bracken mentioned earlier that they are recharging into groundwater, but I don't recall he said anything about the percentage of what is recharged. Because the Nantucket Bylaw calls for a very specific amount of recharge, and that amount is a pretty stringent standard of 95% annual precipitation. As I get to, I don't believe the design meets that. The second standard is, as it says here, if you are going to go beyond the 15%, then you must show that there's no degradation of groundwater quality. Again, a very high standard, requires a lot of treatment. So, this project has, has been set 52%, about three and a half times over the 15%. And again, just to be super clear, if the town is going to grant that standard, or the developer intends to meet the standard, they have to do two things. They have to show that not, not just recharge, but 95% of annual precipitation. And then, secondly, no degradation of water quality, not just some reduction, but no degradation. Pretty tough standards, and this is our drinking water, so they should be, I'm glad they're tough. So, just a little bit on the recharge, 95% recharge. What happens when it rains and we get a production of stormwater runoff? We have something called interception. In non, in non-impervious areas, trees are a good example, that where the trees suck up a lot of the water. However, in a, in a case like this where we've got more than half of the development impervious, we have rooftops and driveways and roads, and most of that water runs off the surface, but not all of it. And that's because the rooftops stay wet, there are depressions on the pavement. So, a certain amount of that runoff, depending on how it's designed and also the materials used, will get different amounts of runoff that then can be recharged towards that minimum of 95% reduction, or excuse me, recharge. So, looking at the images that are provided by the applicant here, it appears to me, and like John Chessey, I'm not an architect either, but it appears to me, looking at these pictures, we're talking about fairly conventional roof shingles, and we're also talking about batuminous asphalt pavement. Those surfaces absorb a fair amount of water, 15 to 20% of annual precipitation. That leaves between 80 and 85% of this precipitation for recharge. Again, this town standard is 95%. So, this design does not meet the town standards for the first, for the first requirement. And one of the reasons for that is, you can see close up here, after a rainfall, the pavement's wet, the rooftop's wet, so this absorbs a lot of water. Depending on the type of rooftop, depending on the type of pavement, you get differing amounts of retention or interception. So, let me move to the second standard, perhaps one that is maybe even more important, and that's the water quality standard. Now, stormwater has a lot of pollutants in it, as I tell my students at both Tufts and Harvard. We think wastewater is a bad thing, has nitrates, has pathogens, has solids. Well, stormwater has a lot more, a much broader group of pollutants that are in there. I've just highlighted a few of them, and I've got some, some of these pollutants you can see, as I'm showing in these pictures, petroleum hydrocarbons, hydraulic fluids, oils, byproducts of breakdown of engine combustion. And one that people don't think about, tire rubber. As I tell my students, you have to buy a new pair of tires every 50,000 miles. Why is that? Where did you leave the rubber on your tires? Every time you'd make a turn or on the road, it lays down a little bit of tire rubber, which happens to have metals and organic compounds in it, some of which I've identified in my letter. So, there's a lot of pollutants here. Many of them are synthetic organic pollutants. The other one that I didn't mention, but I have highlighted here, it's been in the news, PFAS. There's PFAS in stormwater as well. So, this is pretty nasty stuff. And again, why we want to keep the loads as low as possible, 15% or less. We go over 15%, we're going to have higher concentrations, in this case, three times, more than three times, three and a half times, the loads and concentration than that 15% threshold level. The stormwater system is proposed here, and I've got a picture from their engineering diagrams on the right. These are subsurface chambers, it's probably the most common way because it's frankly, I think the advantages are, they're cheap and they don't take up any space on the property. So, it's great for the developer, they can max out the development, they can make more money, and it's, that's why it's very popular. It works, it works. And it works on many sites, but in a drinking water area, this is problematic. The picture on the left is a, is sort of a better picture to explain how this works. As somebody said, I think, it might have been Dennis, or might, oh, actually, it might have been Sean. The only thing we see at the surface is the catch basin, which is what's showing in the middle of this picture on the left. The rest of it is all subsurface. It's a, it's a system of piping, usually plastic piping, that goes to these chambers that then directs the water directly into the groundwater. I view these things as, as injection systems. This is injecting stormwater into the ground, it is not treating it, there's no treatment going on here. It's an injection thing. There is some treatment of some of the basic pollutants, not in these systems, but within the soil itself beneath them. They do filter particulates. So, one of the standards in the, in the Mass DEP stormwater standards is 80% of total suspended solids. Those are particulates. The ground will do that easily, so it will meet those standards. But when we're talking about PFAS, petroleum hydrocarbons, benzene, toluene, other pollutants, you're not going to get that treatment in this system. And just to conclude, four or five quick bullets. Again, this project as designed, using the types of materials that they're proposing, does not achieve the 95% annual precipitation requirement in the bylaw. The project does have three and a half times the maximum allowable impervious surface, and I say maximum allowable, using conventional treatment, which would allow that technology up to 15%. Because the impervious surfaces are about three and a half times greater than, we have, we have the same multiplier that we apply to the pollutant load. So, if there's a little bit of benzene going into the groundwater from gasoline from a 15% or less development, we have more than three times that going in on this project. The loads directly track the amount of impervious surfaces. So, it's not the impervious surface itself that's causing the problem, it's the volume of stormwater and the loads of pollutants within the stormwater that's creating the threat. And then, therefore, based upon that, the project really must mitigate this increased pollutant load to the level identified in the bylaw, no degradation. And I believe that is my, oh, one more slide. A proposed system is applicable to projects less than 15%. As I said, everybody's using these, these infiltration basins, they're inexpensive, but not in one that has 52% impervious cover. So, I will stop there. Madam Chair, I did submit a written letter with a lot more detail in it, and I can go into a lot more detail on any of these items, but I will stop sharing my screen at this
Wow.
I hope you could hear me okay. I tried to.
Yeah, yeah. It's, you know, it's, it's, the speakers in here are much louder in the back of the room, are much clearer than they are where we are up front. So, the takeaway that I, or one of them, is that the, the project, or the, the stormwater infiltration underground design may be appropriate for a 15% impervious surface, but is not appropriate for a 52%, which we have here. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. That's exactly what I'm saying. The 15% is designed for systems that meet this de minimis amount of stormwater going in the ground, and it's based upon loading, the volume of pollutants. I think it's, I think it should be fairly understandable that if you have three times the volume of stormwater, you're going to have three times the load. So, that, you're absolutely correct, Madam Chair.
And what, what would you recommend, like, what, what would need to be done to mitigate have, you know, you mentioned a pond or other surface, maybe surface mitigate, or maybe, maybe you mentioned that actually, Sean.
So, I would, I would, I would.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think, I'm, I'm going to, Sean Riordan's at the.
Yeah, go ahead, Sean, I'm sorry.
Mike, so.
Just want to be clear, there are two issues here. One, the protection of drinking water quality, right? So, the regulations Scott was referring to are a function of protecting your water supply. The stormwater standards, which was the bulk of my commentary, are independent requirements. So, the 15% has nothing to do with my, my requirements. Whether it's 2% impervious or whether it's 98% impervious, they still need to meet the standards using the approved treatment methods because they're within the Zone 2. So, whether it's, whether it was a house with a driveway, or whether it was a, you know, a 40-story skyscraper with 100% impervious, they still need to meet the, they still need to treat for water quality using the allowed measures within the stormwater standards.
Okay, Madam Chair.
And to the point.
Based on state regs.
It's a heightened concern if you're going to thereby, you know, that's based on the 15% as a baseline.
Right.
If you're thereby going to ask for more beyond that, the expectation is that you should be doing more than the minimum that's required for 15%.
Okay, all right, got it. So, then I guess back to Mr. Horstley, did, what were the, what are the options that you would suggest that would, I guess, help with the stormwater management? And I guess it would, I would have to minimize the impervious surface if.
Yeah, I would, so, my recommendations would be, and the applicant's not going to like this, but number one, move the project outside the Zone 2. It's not the right place for a project of this density. That's, that's, and not to get off the topic, but that's the problem with 40B. It allows applicants to come into areas where they really shouldn't be. This is an incredibly good example of it. So, that's option number one, that'd be the best thing. Second thing would be redesign the project with no more than 15% impervious surface, and then do what Sean's saying, use the right stormwater techniques, if you can get it down to 15%. If they want to try to make a project like this work, they're going to have to go very, very far, and in my opinion, it's going to be extremely expensive, more than they know, to try to treat to a standard of no degradation for that additional up to 52%. We're talking, you know, some very innovative designs, I mean, there's carbon filtration, there's all kinds of stuff they could do, but I suspect it's way too expensive, which is why we should not have a project in, like, of this density in a drinking water, because it gets, this is supposed to be, I'm off the topic a little bit, but I can't help it. This is supposed to be an affordable housing project, they have to be economically designed. To get to protect the drinking water is going to be too expensive unless, unless somebody caves and says, you know, let's not worry so much about the stormwater. But the reason the regulation is there is because you have a, you have a drinking water area in a sole source aquifer, there's probably no place in the country that has a more vulnerable groundwater system, highly permeable, no organics, no natural. That's why EPA designated the Nantucket Aquifer as a nationally recognized one. So, I, I don't think, practically speaking, I don't think there are treatment mechanisms that will be affordable for a project with this much impervious surface. At 15%, I think they could do what Sean is suggesting and use the correct technologies as identified by Mass DEP.
Okay, thank you. Alisa, you have a question? Or comment?
I have a comment. How did the applicant get this far? Just as a community member, I'd like to say this. How did the applicant get this far without having any plan in place on how to deal with stormwater and drinking water, that especially now knowing how far away from the standards that are allowable? How are we even sitting here when you're basically proposing to poison the groundwater that the people that are going to live on the ground have to drink? This does not make sense. This is so ludicrous, I'm, I'm furious. And if this has been hidden, I'd love to know how you're going to deal with this because this is disgusting. I don't, I am so ready to vote no on this, I'm ready to turn this whole thing down, just based on listening to that, it is disgusting. Do you want to live there with poisoned water running over your body when you're in the shower and when you're drinking it? What are you guys doing? This makes no sense to me. I think it's terrible. Unless they are completely wrong, you better prove it, and you better figure out how to deal with all of this runoff that's basically poisonous under this development. It's grotesque.
Can I just, a follow-up question, just so I understand it, my non-scientific mind. So, on one hand, you're trying to recover as much of the water into the ground, right? That's why with the roofs and, and the pavement is too much, but at the same time, you want to make sure that is all filtered, is that right? Do I understand it?
Treated and filtered.
Treated, okay.
And I also want to just point out, Alisa, that it's not just affecting this development, it's affecting the groundwater of the island.
And all the wells that are up against this property, everybody else's drinking water, so we've got traffic, we've got poisonous water. What is going on? Take the density of this thing way down to half, like he suggests. This is crazy. This is way overdevelopment, it's too dense, there's too much getting jammed into this piece of property. It's terrible. I am, just so everybody knows, I'm voting against this. I don't care what anybody says from here forward. I don't, I'm, I am not voting for this, no way.
I had a question.
Just, who, who within the town, I think it's the Health Department, but why, I don't see anyone from the water company having a comment, are they having any comments or?
They only talked about the.
The volume.
The volume. They never talked about the treatment of water.
And I, I'd like to get input from.
I don't know, is that?
The water company.
Did they deal with that?
I sure hope.
How did it get this far if we haven't heard from them?
I mean, because I'm just asking because the, when we do.
My concern is that this is, drops through the cracks because maybe the Board of Health doesn't address it.
Well, so, right now, the, the water testing for real estate transactions goes through the Board of Health.
Yeah.
And is reported to the DEP if you have a certain, if you hit a certain level of the PFAS. But the water company, the water company, I don't believe is really involved in that process right now. So, it probably has to do more with maybe Board of Health, I don't know, we can look into it.
Because I, I don't, you know, again, we, we are also obligated to, to look at things, not make this project special in terms of what we require, and I just want to find out, is it, are we requiring this at all major developments or, you know?
Yeah, would that be a planning board question?
Well, so, I, we're, to the applicant, were you requesting a waiver from the 15%?
We don't need a waiver to the 15%.
Because you say that you, you recharge.
Because we are charging 95%. But to answer your question, Jim, major commercial developments require a water quality certificate issued by WannaComet. They review the plan, it is Zone 2, and they issue that certificate when the drainage system meets the requirements of the Stormwater Management Act. And usually, that's approved or reviewed by Ed Pachy, sends his review to the planning board, and they approve that. Now, you know, I might be a little, you know, sound aggravated, I don't want to come off that way, but Mr. Horstley and I know each. But Mr. Horsley and I know each other pretty well. We've been opposing each other many times. And I disagree with a lot of things that he had said. I'd like to make some general comments about what he said. But again, we'll be replying to everything in writing. So this whole 15%, 2,500 square feet, all right, that's in the bylaw. It's always been in the bylaw. There've been dozens of plans we've worked on and other people, and it's always been the same standard. And again, our treatment is far better than most other projects have been treated and gotten a certificate and comply with the Stormwater Management Act. And, you know, the other thing is, and Jimmy made a great point, is because you also have to consider what the town is doing on its own, what standards the town is using. And Alisa, I understand your concerns, but we should check out the drainage rebuild, the drainage structures that were rebuilt on Soul Shore Road. Catch basin directly into a leaching pit. No treatment. 25% TSS removal. We have 80% TSS removal. You know, again, we go from the catch basins to a grit separator to infiltration systems. And the infiltration systems do get credit for removal of pollutants. I'm not a chemistry expert, so I'm not going to get into any of that. All I can say is that this town has had certain standards. And we've gone by those standards and projects have been built. And that standard has been in conformance with the Stormwater Management Act. And that's what this, that's what this project is. And, you know, again, the 95% annual recharge? Well, if you were to agree with Mr. Horsley's theory, you would never have a project approved in this town. You know, first of all, you know, because obviously a scarcity of the land, most projects are at 80%, if not more, with waivers for open space through the planning board. And that water is recharged. Now, what wasn't discussed is under the 95%. If you take the existing area as wooded, right? And you get whatever, 40 inches of rainfall a year, the trees and the undergrowth are going to absorb a lot of that. So when you look at that 95%, it should be looked at what the net is going to be. And so you can, common sense will tell you, yes, it's 52% impervious, which by the Intucket standards is egregious. You know, you're taking those impervious areas, you're treating it, especially the roof runoff, and you're putting it directly into the ground. I mean, I'm pretty confident that there's more recharge, if you're just talking about recharge. I'm not talking about chemical treatment or removal. There's more recharge under the proposed conditions when it comes to volume. And that's why that bylaw is in there, is to make sure that the volume is consistent and it's not going to be reduced.
Three and a half times over.
Every project on the Intucket is at least three and a half. That's the bylaw. It's forcing you to take these measures, which we've taken.
Is this something that John Chesia can, how do we, you know, I feel like I'm in court and you have, you know, two different people and we need somebody as a peer to be able to review this information and let us know?
So John's, and he can speak to it again, but we, and we spent a lot of time on the stormwater back in 2023.
Yeah.
Was that just, no, it must've been earlier than, whenever it was.
But I also feel like at that point, we didn't really have a lot of teeth that we could put into this.
I think, Mr. Chesia, you can respond, but I think you did, you still say that they're not in compliance with the stormwater standard two?
No, standard two is runoff rate. And by recharge, you know, putting all the water in the ground, they would meet the runoff rate. I think the issue I had was if the systems that they propose violate setbacks, we're still waiting to understand what those setbacks are, then they would not comply because the systems themselves would not comply with the setbacks from the wells or septic systems or whatever's within the distance that they're supposed to be separated from. I just need to see that plan. As far as the, you know, the pollutants and all that, and I believe I did speak about this at the last meeting a little bit. I mean, the way the infiltration system works is that the infiltration system removes 80% of the sediments subject to pretreatment. So we're talking sediments. And sediments may have chemicals attached to them. They would be filtered through the soil. So that's the filtration is in the soil. The stuff, if it's something that doesn't, isn't a sediment, of course, it's going to go through. But that's, that's my interpretation of the regulations is that the filtration is in the soil. If it's in a zone two, it's going to take, you get the wrong type of stuff in there. Yes, they'll have to deal with it. Sediments would get bound up in the soil under the system. And occasionally, at some point in time, they'd have to dig it all up, dig out the soil that's got sediments in it and replace the whole thing, which is obviously a costly, costly thing to happen at some point in time. I don't know if that answers the question, but that's sort of what the stormwater standards, as I reviewed and looked at. And if you remember, I did review it back in 2018, which was quite some time ago. And there has been advancements in, you know, stormwater things. And the state is in the process of rewriting their whole regulation and handbooks and all that. But that's been held up, I think, since before COVID hit. And now it was supposed to be this summer. It's still, we're still waiting. So I'm not sure what's going on with that. But that's, that's what I, that's what I can tell you on it.
Okay, thank you. Alisa has a question for you.
John?
Yes.
So you heard Scott Horsley. You represent us as a board. So you're our, you're our person. You're our watchdog. You heard Scott. You heard Don Bracken. Who's more right or who's more wrong? They're so completely far apart. I feel like I'm watching the news at two different, you know, stations. Somebody's, you know, obviously, everybody is hired to sway the facts in one direction or the other for, depending on who's paying them. But who, in your opinion, is being more truthful or more accurate? Because, you know, I'm not a water quality specialist. I'm not an engineer. I'm, you know, I don't work for the EPA. But we're very far apart on this. And I'm really, as I mentioned, upset that it's gotten this far in the permitting and hearing process without, when it is three and a half times over what is allowable. So what do you think?
So I think that it's obviously a complicated issue. And I think it depends on what you look at as the guidance of what you're trying to achieve. When I looked at it, I looked at it under the state stormwater handbook, which lists the various things. And that's how I wrote my letter. They have, you know, if you look at it as a strict, no potential to contaminate the groundwater, it's a pretty strict standard. Almost anything, anything can happen. I mean, we, I think in 2018, PFASs were barely even a subject. So now people are having to design their water treatment plants to catch those things and treat them. So what happens in things of this nature, there's the water supply system, and I don't know enough about what's happening in the Intucket to be able to tell you. But typically, if you have wells, in the old days, the wells would be pumped right into the, they'd pump out of the ground and right into the system and you'd drink it. Nowadays, more often than not, they're pumped to treatment facilities to remove some of the contaminants and deal with those things. And as a town, you have to look at, I guess, that bigger picture. Sometimes when this stuff developed in the, I mean, the ideal would be to have a well in an area that had nothing in it. Then it would be always clear. Look at Quabon Reservoir. You've got acres and acres that the state took and they, you know, took towns away to have a massive watershed that wouldn't be contaminated. Most places can't afford to do that, so you don't have that. So you have to look at it. And I would recommend, yes, talking to the water company, the water supply company. How would they deal with issues as they arise? If this will, is this, do they consider this project a threat to contamination? And if it were, what, how do they treat their water? What do they do to take care of the water supply? Because they're sort of bigger issues than just this one project, I say, I would say, to, to an extent. But nothing's foolproof. Having something underground, you can't see it. If it gets something in it, yep, that's a big problem. But did they design stuff that's sort of consistent with other projects in the town and what's been going on before? And, you know, they stayed with what they had. In 2018, when I was involved in that, I had them definitely upgrade what they started with for treatment. And they brought in other systems and, you know, things to remove floatables and the oil grit separators, things like that. There was a bunch of stuff done to make it better. And at the time, that was sort of looked at as what was, you know, required. So I guess the bottom line is this, I don't have a clear cut. Yes, this, this one's right and this one's wrong. It's much more complex.
Can I ask George a question? Madam Chair? Can I ask Mr. Pucci?
Yeah, of course.
Specifically with regard to PFAS, that wasn't, well, we talked about it a little bit. We had a presentation.
Remember, there was Mr. Kuhn.
Yeah.
He came for, Megan Perry brought him in from.
Right, I remember.
And it was, people hadn't heard about it much at that time.
So I think it would be argued that, well, it didn't exist at the time we applied. But it did exist. It's just we've become more aware. So how should we treat the PFAS? I know the airport, for example, doesn't take that view, you know, even though they said, hey, you know, it's not covered, so we're not going to do anything. They're trying to be proactive about it. And I don't think this would differ, correct?
Yeah, you do, you do need further information. First of all, you need, you will need the applicant's response to the land council's consultants take that. I would definitely recommend that you provide the land council's expert consultant reports to the Water Department Board of Health and see what further comment that they have on that. I don't know how the town treats its other projects with regard to these issues. So you have to be careful that way, too, is that you can't treat this project differently than the town treats other projects.
But this, you know, this is unique because it's moving so fast, right? It's not because they've made a decision not to deal with this stuff. It's just.
Yeah, I just don't know. And I, I don't think the board knows either at this point. I think you need more information.
But it sounds like the regulations are even going to change. And I'm assuming they're getting more strict. And you talk about.
But we can't, he said that's not even going to be this summer. But I do think we should send these reports to the Board of Health and the water company and ask them to respond.
And because water, water has usually been asked just in terms of capacity.
Right.
Not water quality.
Well, when we first looked at the project, we had a lot more open space.
Well, remember, you ended up with 60 units.
Open space.
First time around, it was 60 units.
The one that we approved, was that under the 15%?
I don't remember.
I don't remember.
And just for.
I also think it wasn't just, just the water wasn't, it's just right on the surface now. And that wasn't, the water quality wasn't as pressing of an issue at that point.
I think absorption too will be an issue now where it wasn't before, where Mr. Horsley made a great point that trees take up a lot of that. And I didn't, I didn't see any, many there last time I was reviewing the site. But I guess you could plant trees.
Well, then, don't forget, there's going to be 300 cars there that the water hits and runs down off of and runs over all cars.
And just the wall pull matter that Dennis had mentioned is on appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee. I represent the board in that. And it was a denial. Mr. Riordan and actually Mr. Horsley rendered opinions in that case.
It was a flat denial, not a.
It was a denial, yeah.
And they were, it was less impactful than this.
But it's.
Well, it is what it is. Yeah, that was just in terms of a percentage.
Yeah, but.
No, I guess what I'm saying is no appellate ruling on that issue as of yet. No, it has not proceeded to the stage that evidence has been presented yet in the HAC proceeding.
Okay.
Just one more follow-up. Mr. Horsley, is it, are we unique in that we have a sole source aquifer? I hear the Cape discussed too. I remember hearing about the Wisconsin Glacier and something like that before. So is this a really unique situation compared to other areas of Massachusetts?
There, Cape Cod is also designated as a sole source aquifer, very similar situation. And then Plymouth.
Not the same one.
I'm sorry?
Not the same one.
No, a separate, separate one. So Plymouth Carver is also a sole source aquifer. All of these have the similar characteristics I mentioned. Highly permeable, very low organic content. The reason I mention the organic content is that's what might allow from a sent attenuation of some of these other pollutants.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, just if I could make one final comment. So the language in the stormwater standards is a legal regulation that's binding. And it has a table of uses of BMPs, those best management practices, that are allowed in the zone two. This project doesn't use those. That one is not really subject to debate. Riordan will back me up on that. So that's one discrete issue. They're not using the correct infrastructure in the ground for this area. A second related issue is that you only get to exceed 15% if you demonstrate no degradation in groundwater quality. Horsley says there will be. Logic says there will be. If you're going to triple the amount of stormwater, you're going to triple the pollutant load. Right now, there is no treatment happening except for solid things that you could catch in a net, not things that dissolve in water like all these toxins and chemicals. There's no treatment for that whatsoever. The last point I wanted to make is I do agree that other boards, like the Board of Health and the Water Company, but you're the board under 40B that actually owns this responsibility to protect the public water supply. The Water Commission does not have independent regulations that they would be able to deny a water permit or something. The Board of Health doesn't have an official role that they could actually take in action. Only this board has a role in whether you allow that exceedance of 15% and to what extent you would allow it. And please don't allow it unless you're convinced that it meets the standard of no degradation in groundwater quality. That evidence hasn't been presented from the applicant at all.
Just follow, so are you suggesting that these regulations have always been in place for the most part? And maybe the town just hasn't enforced it? Or is it a matter of?
The difference is it's a different scale. So you don't see many projects on this island where you have a 13 acre parcel of land that they're looking to pave more than half of it. So this is six new acres of impervious coverage. And other than the airport, I'm not aware it's ever happened. So it's a function of scale. If you were talking about exceeding on the typical quarter acre lot, then yes, that one little thing violates the rules, but it doesn't have the catastrophic public health consequence that when you aggregate the stormwater from six acres of pavement. So it's, to answer your question, it's at a much greater scale, which is why it's such an issue.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and materials. I think at this point, if there's, if no one has any questions on the board, I'd like to go to the members of the audience or the, if there's anyone online that has any comments or questions. Okay. Mr. Durencis, did you want? Yeah, yeah. Do you want to? I don't see, well, actually, I don't have my thing up, but I don't see any hands.
Madam Chair, there are no hands currently raised.
Okay, so the floor is yours. Are there other people in the audience who also want to speak? Okay, okay. Mr., is it Zemicki? Mr. Zemicki got cut off last time, so I. Mr. Zemicki got cut off last time, so I definitely want to make sure that you are able to speak. And so Mr. Drenses, just, we have twenty-five minutes. And so your wife, your wife wants to speak and Mr. Zemicki.
I'm not planning to speak that long.
Okay.
But there's two components to what I want to say. The first is that there was this long discussion with council, and you got a lot of information from the developer and their consultant. And we think that that information is not correct, so we wanted to correct some of the information that you were just given. There was a comment about parking and traffic and, and that there's no change in traffic between the old plan and the new plan, and so you don't need to do a traffic study. There's two changes that you should consider. Single-family houses have driveways, and people usually park their car in the driveway for single-family houses. Condos do not have driveways for those condos. There you're talking about parking lots, very different. And secondly, the traffic plan that was before HAC, Housing Appeals Committee, and Superior Court, had a pedestrian easement that went from the project site to surfside roads so that people could get to the buses and so on. They've eliminated that pedestrian easement. So now you're going to have people with baby carriages in the street where all the traffic is, off-site. You're going to have, Jamie Feely was cross-examined by me in his testimony. He said there's going to be five hundred residents at this site. And you take five hundred residents with all their cars, and you eliminate the sidewalk. That's going to have a traffic impact from that change alone. Another point. There was a discussion about project financing. At the time, the issue of project financing was litigated. We were not parties to the proceeding, nor was the Nantucket Water and Land, and Land Council, or Land and Water Council. We were not parties. The information on the economics was based on multiplying the sales price of all the units to determine revenue. When I cross-examined the developer, he said, well, they weren't all going to be sold on the same day. They had a phasing in plan that was going to be done over years. And he acknowledged, in terms of the revenue stream, that the prices were going up and had been going up twenty percent a year. None of that was factored into the economics. Our position is that that economic decision made before we were parties to the case is all wrong, based on the admissions made by the developer in that cross-examination. It's completely artificial number. The revenue stream was greatly depressed. Then there's a statement that, that things are, are being worked out or have been worked out with the fire department. And that couldn't be further from the truth. In August of 2024, we had filed with the ZBA the sworn testimony of a number of witnesses. Among those, we submitted the sworn testimony of the Nantucket Fire Chief, who said, quote, "It is the position of the fire department that the proposed design and size of the buildings in relation to the size of the lot and location of the site provides inadequate fire access, creating a serious public safety concern." Then we backed that up by filing with this board the sworn testimony of Dave Franzudo, former Nantucket Emergency Management Director, who testified, quote, "In my professional opinion, in the field of emergency management, a residential project of the size, density, and configuration as that proposed should not be constructed at the present location." Then we backed that testimony up with the testimony of another witness, the sworn expert testimony of a fire expert, who testified, quote, "In my professional opinion, that the presence of the project would foreseeably prevent Nantucket authorities from successfully fighting a significant fire at or near the site." The developer did not cross-examine any of this testimony. The developer's fire safety expert instead dismissed the need to even look at the fire safety conditions on Nantucket. And he testified, quote, "This question was not analyzed." That's the position that the developer is in. Not the fire safety not analyzed. Now we get a report from the Select Board that has comments from the fire department. Those comments from the fire department back up and corroborate the same issues. I'll read from the Select Board letter. If you'd hold that. The Select Board says, "Further, the fire chief notes that this is a very densely constructed development, providing limited access and will place excessive burdens on the department if an emergency arises. The need for properly protected residents, appropriate access for emergency equipment, and adequate water supply must be provided for the eventual crises that happens. There is a huge fire safety issue not addressed in these plans." Then there's the question of second access. In my cross-examination of Jamie Feely, after saying that there's five hundred residents to be at this location, he acknowledged that they have never presented a project to this CBA with only one access. So for the first time, after all the work that you've done on this project, going back to 2018, this is the first time and only time they have given you a project that has only one access. And again, if you look at the comments from the Select Board and the comments from others that have been forwarded to you, there is a universal cry. The planning board, the DPW, the police, everybody says it's unsafe without having another means of access. This is a serious issue not addressed. And then referring to the testimony you just heard about contamination of wells. Again, in August, we submitted the sworn testimony of a butter wine hold, who testified, "Due to groundwater flow and permeability of the sandy soils, any contamination or release from the project site or into groundwater would flow into our property and contaminate our well." Now you receive the reports from the Nantucket Land and Water experts echoing what was submitted to you with sworn testimony on August 28th corroborating the same. And one final point. We submitted the sworn testimony of Diane Coombs regarding that the development plans violate the historic district standards for this island. She testified, quote, "The development's non-compliance with the HTC standards cannot be resolved without significant alteration to the size, density, and configuration of the proposed project." Again, the Select Board report, we saw attached to it comments from the HTC that echo and mirror those comments made by Diane Coombs, again verifying this issue. Developer's response is to request waivers from the HTC requirements. But our legal position is waiver is not allowed for the HTC because the HTC has its own act of the legislature. And that act of the legislature basically sets this up so that you are acting as the HTC. But the choices before you are issue a certificate of appropriateness for designs that everybody is telling you are inappropriate, or deny a certificate of appropriateness. There is no provision for a waiver. The two statutes, forty B and the statute creating the HTC, need to be read in harmony. So what we have here, in addition to all of that, is the pattern of behavior by the developer who has consistently provided less than accurate presentations. They've been giving you information that has been proven wrong so many times. Added to that is that pattern of intransigence, showing that they have not listened to anything from all these boards, committees, witnesses. They haven't changed the project. They have said from the start of this hearing that they are not willing to make changes because the infrastructure is already in. Yet their plans omit so much. They have put you in a situation where you're down to the second to last hearing day, and you're getting information now. This information should have been given to you before the first day of hearing, and in fact, should have been given years ago. Should have been given to Superior Court. Should have been given to Housing Appeals Committee. And now? When there's like one more day scheduled in January? You're starting to get information, and they still owe you more information? This hearing is not a game. This is affecting the health, welfare of the island. There needs to be accountability that the developer isn't acting in good faith in what we've seen so far. So my final point is this. Essentially, the developer is asking you to allow for the creation of two classes of citizenship on this island. Those with money who can afford decent housing, and now a second class of less financial, with people with less financial means, who are to be put in unsafe, dangerous buildings. This contempt for the less fortunate can't be countenanced by this board or any board. People who are struggling financially should be treated the same as everybody else. Everybody is treated, should be entitled to decent, safe housing. This is not, doesn't come close to safe housing. When you look at all the reports that the Select Board has forwarded to you, they all have comments, questions, recommendations. They're not saying, you don't have, all these boards and committees saying, approve this project? They're all telling you this project is flawed. When you read all of the reports, whether it's from the planning board, the police, the fire department, DPW, HTC, it's a constant litany. This project fails. Okay. So we're asking you to reject this project, deny it. Don't try to play games with them with conditions. At this point, you shouldn't trust them to comply with any condition.
I wanted to say to you, say to you.
You've been given a huge task, and you have four hours left. When you were talking about, let's get that person in, let's get this person in. You have four hours left, and that's a deadline given to you by the developer. Every town and board and committee, except for one, said there are many concerns and flaws with surfside crossing. That means hundreds of people have looked at this project and have grave concerns about surfside crossing and the effects that it has on the health, safety, and welfare of the entire island. If a project needs so many waivers, that's another red flag that, especially since a lot of these waivers deal with directly with safety. You talk about putting conditions on this project, and at what point do you simply say, this is a deeply flawed project that the developer had years to fix? Instead, they made this project, if you can believe it, worse. The developer has said no extension, and instead, in the letter you got from the developer's lawyer, they actually blame your board, saying you could. board, saying you could have started the hearing sooner, totally disregarding that this board was dealing with a special town meeting in the fall, and you were also an entirely volunteer board. Also in the packet, the developer's lawyer put in two cases from Sherburne. What I find amazing is that they didn't put in the third case from Sherburne, which is one of the developers that is directly involved, the developer in that case was directly involved in this matter. Perhaps it is because that project in Sherburne that is not mentioned in your packet was a disaster. The property was clear cut, outrageous demands were made on the town, the same playbook, they're being, they're using it again. During the last CBA hearings that I sat in on, the former chair even asked the developer, "Why do you have to clear cut? You'll be building in phases, can't you cut as you build?" The developer said, "No." Also, last time, the ZDA spent a lot of time working on a project that they felt would work. You basically designed a whole new project that you said, "This will, this works." The developer immediately went to hack with the new project. Don't waste your time on coming up with a project you think will work. The developer from day one has said to you, "We are not negotiating, we put the infrastructure in, this is what it is." There are so many flaws in this project, simply saying, "No." The Nantucket Tipping Point brought in a water expert that George brought up in 2018, who said, stood it, stood in front of the board and said, "You have a big PFAS problem on Nantucket." At that point, no one was even talking about PFAS, but we brought it to the attention. Just the storing of the neighbors' wells, which is going to happen with this project, is enough for denial of this project. Read all the letters that have been submitted to you. Everybody has concerns about this project. Lastly, I want to leave you with this. If you were here on that day in the summer when the Veranda House went up, you, you know how awful it was. You know that it was a miracle that our entire downtown didn't burn down. And now this developer wants to build 19 of Veranda House-sized buildings. On that day, an off-duty firefighter ran into the building with no gear, using a neighbor's wooden ladder to get people out and to save lives. Imagine a windy day on Nantucket, and all 19 buildings are on fire. I know the developer will say, "Oh, we're going to have sprinkler systems." But you know what started this fire? A cigarette. And it went, and it was outside. Sprinklers aren't outside. Imagine, on this day, on South Shore Road, 19 of these buildings are burning, and the fire is spreading because we've all been on Nantucket when there are really windy days. And you know the neighbors down South Shore Road can't get out because the traffic is all boxed in. There's too many people, you know, there's too many. Who do the firefighting firefighters save? Would you want that on your conscience? You have been given enough concerns for the health, safety, and welfare of this, for this island. Just say, "No" to this project. You've tried compromising, that didn't work. Just tell the developer what they always tell you, "No." Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Jacques Simicki. I live at 13 Werewell Lane. Just some comments. First on parking. Four years ago, five years ago, there was testimony about the parking, and one of the points brought up was that if there was not an abundance of parking, what will happen is people will park on the road, and then the fire trucks can't get by. And that was a big concern of the Fire Department. One car per room probably doesn't cut it on this, this particular design. It was much better when it was single houses with driveways that could actually be non- impervious surfaces, which would have solved a lot of the water problems that we're talking about now. So that's parking. The 52% impervious surface, is that just the parking lots, or does that include roofs and houses?
Roofs.
Okay.
So just, just to say, Mr. Reardon answered and said that the 52% includes roofs, parking lot.
Absolutely everything.
Yeah.
So a few things. The water from the roofs should be treated as the water from the parking lots. Different pollutants, but just as bad pollutants coming off roofs as cars. The development sits between what's called domes of water, which determine the way the water moves away from the domes. So it's fractured due by two domes. The way the water goes from that particular property is southwest, that'd be the groundwater. Actually, if there was any surface water, it goes to the southwest. One of the... So a couple of things. So going back to my well, which is located 50 feet from property, 44, 4 feet from property line. If I had to put in a new well today, let's say that well just, for some reason, failed, I would have to put it 300 feet away to the south of their property line because regulations state that if I put my well upstream of a pollution source, it can be 100 feet. Downstream is 300 feet. That's a Nantucket law. You can find it under the well regulations. So really, when you're starting to look at pollution going into the well, you really need to consider the 300 feet, not 100 feet, for pollution. Though, if it's going to poll, if it's going to poll my well, it's polluting aquifer, which is against the law, as you've heard. I'm sorry, I'm not very good at public speaking, and I will write a paper for you guys for the next meeting to explain a number of things with the geohydrology of how the water moves in Nantucket. One of the things you might, if you're hiring independent experts, is talk about the movement of the water and velocity of the water moving through the aquifer. Some places in Nantucket, it's 978 feet a day, some places it's way less. And that's really important. It means that there's, if a pollutant gets into the aquifer, it's 978 feet down aquifer the next day. And that's not all pollutants, but most pollutants. There's some pollutants, well, such as PFAS, which is, it's called a pollutant that has early arrival, and for some reason, it travels through aquifers quicker than other chemicals. And there's whole, there are groups of chemicals that do this, but they're not really sure exactly what the mechanism is. So when you look at horizontal velocities and vertical velocities, you need to consider what chemicals you're dealing with and whether they have early arrival tendencies or not. You know, and that's really, and this probably doesn't really, there's been some research recently on PFAS that that's not necessarily true. It does have early arrival, but sometimes it hangs up in the first couple of feet of the soil, and then gets released five years later, 10 years later. If you put it in sand, it's pretty much early arrival, as would be anything in a system that is being put over there, as for crossing. Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you. Okay, so we're at our...
Can I just add something to what he said?
Oh, sure. Sorry, Mr. Dernsas.
Just to expand on one of the things he said. In the sworn testimony that we provided to you is a map of the wells that existed in 1996. There was a comment from developer that, "Oh, there's new wells and all this kind of stuff." There are wells there that predate this project, and if you apply the Nantucket setbacks that are required, it goes into the project site and would require redesign of the project. It's, that map is in the last page of the sworn testimony that we provided.
Okay.
But there were also other maps, one provided by Chris Meredith, that shows the setbacks for the wells that need to be installed because there are people living there. And I want to submit, we had, we want to mark this as an exhibit in the hearings, which is a copy of the photograph that was shown about the Veranda fire.
Okay, you can hand that, you want to just, thank you. Okay, so, okay, thank you. Okay. So we've reached our time. So our next meeting is...
January, on this matter, is scheduled for January 15th.
Oh, really? That late?
We have to close the public hearing?
January 31st.
January 31st. Well, we have regular CBA on the night.
Oh, on the 9th, okay, yeah.
We have New Year's Day next one, or Wednesday before that.
Okay. Madam Chair, I hope we get some, was George here? Further clarification on this 180 days, because I, besides the hack decision, I've looked everywhere, and I can't, the 180-day period, to me, isn't as clear as, there's 30 days, there's the 40 days.
Yeah, the 30 and 40, it doesn't specify. The, it talks about, "You shall hear it the way you would in an initial application." So my argument has always been, you get the full six months, 180 days, on a remand, as you would on the initial application. The presiding officer did not agree with my position, and he gave that January 31 date. But, but you're absolutely right. You're not, stop looking because you're not going to find it.
Is this something that we can pursue?
I, I think the applicant should really agree to an extension. I, I think, Jim, from a risk management standpoint, I don't, my opinion, it would not be a sound position for the board to, if they don't agree to an extension, to close the hearing or, or to ignore that deadline and go ahead, because the day, the next day, they will go to HAC. And, and yeah, you could appeal that down the line. Would a court uphold you there? That, you know, I, I don't want to give an opinion in public, but that, you're on shaky ground with that, so...
Because it's, it could be deemed approval.
Constructive approval, they, they just go to HAC. And you know how HAC gives the permits? They just, you know, it's boilerplate. So, but I, I do think you'd benefit from an extension, that's all, you know.
Okay, so for next time, we have a bunch of stuff that Mr. Bracken is going to respond to in writing. I hope we get that early enough that we can read through it before the meeting.
I do want to talk about...
We'll start out with Lisa next time with HDC, I think. And then, and then I think we really need to have a conversation about how we see this moving forward, because it seems to me, just based on all of everyone's talking about, we have two paths here. We either have, or maybe even three, but we've got what we approved, we've got what, what was sent back to us on remand as a substantial change of that, and then we, and then we have a denial. And so, so we just, we really need to think about all of the information that we've received up to today. And I, and I do, I do think it's, it's telling all of the information that we've received from the town.
Just one, sorry, Lisa, I, I think we have a fourth option, which I was discussing with George, is if we get some additional time, that takes...
Oh, yeah, of course, if we get an extension. But I think we, I think I also, what I hear George saying, and what I, I agree with, and I think I saw some shaking heads too, is regardless, we have to, we, if there's no extension given, then, 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 yeah, and that would be, I think, the worst for everyone involved. And, and most importantly, I think, for the residents that are going to end up living there. I, I don't think, you know, I, I think we need to, there, there's definitely some things that we need to discuss, so...
I, in my opinion, sorry to break in, I mean...
Yeah.
You need more time.
Yeah.
I mean, let's just say that. There's no question about it. If you want me to ask the Developers Council for an extension, I will.
Oh, yeah, please do.
If we want to try it a different way, but you, you need more time, for sure.
I mean, I think we can, I think everyone on the board would, would want an extension.
But at least keep it on for the 15th, for, you know, do as much as you can.
Yeah, but I believe we've asked repeatedly for an extension and been told the entire time, there is no extension coming, so...
And I think we should look at the option of maybe more meetings in January if we have to meet.
I think so.
I think we'll, I think we'll have to. But why don't we vote now, or do we have to vote to ask, for you to ask for an extension?
No, I, I will ask.
Could, I, I mean, I think we also, did we get information about which units are going to be affordable and not?
It was, it's, there was, it was addressed, but it was addressed as it is not, Mr. Haverty, you can probably, it was in your letter, it was in one of the things I read. I don't remember exactly what it said.
It was. My letter indicates that, that the location of the affordable units is within the exclusive jurisdiction...
Oh, right.
...of the subsidizing agency. However, there was an affordable unit location plan approved by the subsidizing agency as part of the final approval. We submitted a copy of that plan to the board, so you do have that.
So it's in there somewhere.
Okay, it's in there somewhere. Okay, so pulling that out would be helpful, Billy, to send to us.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can point it out.
And then, okay.
All right, so we should then make a motion to continue this until January 15th, that's the date.
Right, because we can't do it before our other CBA hearing.
We don't have another date, we don't have another meeting set up currently, so that needs to be cleared by a lot more people than myself.
Yeah.
I think we gotta, we gotta continue to the 15th.
15th.
I mean, if we gotta set one up for the 19th, we can do it at that point, but we gotta continue to the 15th.
Well, I think it would behoove us to look at what's available, not on the 15th, but now, for the 19th.
Well, right now, we have to get out of here, so why don't we...
For the 19th?
Or, or, or close after the 15th, so that we don't find ourselves in a position on the 15th that there isn't anything available.
So we can do that, we can do that.
Yeah, I can work on, I can work on getting dates before the 15th, for sure.
We can do that offline. Perfect. Okay, so...
And depending on where you're at, I, I may file a motion with HAC. If you are on the 15th, you have no other options, you really do need more time, the developer doesn't agree, I'm, I'm going to file a motion, if you instruct me to at that time. Let's see where we're at.
Okay, that sounds good. That sounds like a plan. So at least there's some options. Okay, so...
Motion to adjourn, or?
John Brusher, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Do we need to make that motion to continue to the...
Oh, sorry, to continue to, yes, sorry, thank you, that's why you're vice chair.
Well, I'm here. I'll make a motion to continue the application to January 15th, 2025.
Yep, okay. And second?
Second.
Alisa, seconds? Okay, so roll call. John?
Aye.
Alisa?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And myself, aye. And then, now a motion to adjourn.
They're moved.
All right, so I think John made it, Lisa seconded. John?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Alisa?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your time and patience.